All right, we're on the air.
The February 14th meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called to order at 7:31. Can we have the announcements, please?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in the audience are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interfere with the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On to the roll call.
Before we go any further.
Oh, yes.
Before we go any further, I would like to make an announcement about the composition of the planning board. At its meeting last week, the township committee rearranged its two seats on the planning board. Mayor Lavender will take the Class 1 seat personally, and Brendan Ray will move from the Class 1 seat to the Class 3 seat, replacing Mr. Verlisa, who has resigned from the board. Neither one of those two gentlemen is here tonight because they will both, are both recusing themselves from this application, but anticipate that they will be sworn in and take their seats in the normal course of business at our next meeting in two weeks. Can we have the roll, please?
Absolutely. Mayor Lavender has recused this evening. Committeeman Ray has recused this evening. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hans?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
The first item of business, the only item of business on tonight's agenda, is the application for Gates Avenue, application number 21-26 Papa. And I would like to ask the members of the audience to please bear in mind that this is the third hearing on this application. We've heard a lot of questions and comments at prior meetings. There have been some changes, and so it might get a little confusing as the meeting wears on, but there is a time for questions of the applicant's engineer. And during the time for questions, I will insist, absolutely insist, that you limit your questions to questions. That is to say, they are short and end in a question mark, and then you will have to wait for an answer. I also ask you to pay attention to the answers, so that if you are the third, or fourth, or fifth in line to ask questions, please don't ask a question that's already been answered. It may be on your list, but you have to pay attention to the questions and answers that preceded you. We don't want to prolong this hearing unnecessarily by being redundant. After all the questions are finished, there will be a time for comments. These are your comments about, your thoughts about this application. At that point, I'm going to impose reasonable time limits, because I suspect that the comments will be, will begin to get redundant, but please help us to keep this meeting moving. Counselor, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James First, again, on behalf of the applicant, presenting with our expert, Mr. Matthew Sekler. Mr. Sekler previously was sworn, and will acknowledge that his testimony today will likewise be truthful, as if sworn again today. Mr. Chairman, this is our third time here. We have the third iteration of the project. If the board members recall, the first iteration was one that the board felt was a bit too dense. There were three lots proposed, three homes proposed. The applicant and the engineer heard the concerns of the public and of the board, and went literally back to the drawing board. The second time we were here, which I believe was last September, the board saw a two-lot subdivision application with two homes. The board again had some concerns, the public again had some concerns. Those concerns were listened to, those concerns were reviewed by the applicant and the engineer. Since that time, there has been extensive change to the application. We still have two lots, but you'll note on this application that there are no longer any pools proposed. You'll note on this application that both houses now face gates. What you won't note on this application is the hours and hours and hours of time that Mr. Sekler spent addressing concerns of the neighbors, specifically the neighbor in the rear yard. You'll see there were many modifications to the project with regards to the concerns of the neighbor, some concerns of the board members with regards to drainage, with regards to the retaining walls, with regards to height, with regards to screening. All of those things that we noted were concerns of the board and of the general public, specifically the neighbor in the rear yard, were considered, we believe were addressed, we hope to the satisfaction of the board. And with that, I call our one and only witness, Mr. Matt Sekler, to describe for the board the changes, so that we don't repeat what has previously been done. We'll simply go through the changes, and of course, Mr. Sekler would make himself available for comments, both of the board and of the general public.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, before we proceed, just wanted to have the record reflect that for this third hearing, the applicant did renotice. We had carried the prior hearings without further notice, but since there was a fair amount of time in between the second and third hearing, the applicant did renotice. I did have an opportunity, as always, to review the notice. I found the notice to be sufficient in content. I found it to be timely served and published. It was published on February 1st and certified mailed on February 1st, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board continues to have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application, in my legal opinion, and I wanted to put that on the record. And as previously noted, we too have board members who have recused themselves for this application, but it's my understanding we have, the seven members on the day of this evening are all qualified to vote. Isn't that correct, Deb?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do you have a microphone?
Yes. For the television.
And, Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, we have reviewed, received and reviewed the planner's memo of January 28th, 2003, supplementing the prior memos, as well as the January 30th memo of the engineer, again supplementing prior memos. Mr. Sekler, I believe, will be referring to both of those documents this evening.
Yes, I will. And again, Matthew Sekler, and I do understand I'm still under oath.
And you remain licensed in the state of New Jersey as both a professional engineer and as a professional planner, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So as counsel mentioned, I'll briefly go over the changes to the plan, all of which I think bring this application more in conformity than what was previously proposed. In addition, we believe that there's a number of engineering design aspects of this plan that we believe addresses comments raised by the public and the board's professionals previously. So going over, this is the site plan C3 that was previously provided to the board, no changes compared to what has been previously submitted.
And the last revised date on that, please?
1/13/23.
Thank you.
The top of page C3 is our overall site plan. One of the biggest differences between the two plans is that the building that was on the corner of Mitchell and Gates, which was Lot B, has been rotated and now faces Gates Avenue, and we've essentially aligned it with the same alignment in terms of the offset of, off of Gates Avenue. It is compliant with the front yard setback off of Mitchell Road, and we'll talk about the front yard setbacks and the consistency with down Gates Avenue. But again, the one, I'd say biggest, easiest change of seeds, the building, has been itself rotated.
Timeout. If any member of the audience wants to see these plans, please feel free to come up to the front and sit in the front pew.
Second change is we've eliminated the pools and the extra decking in the back of the site, so what we've done is we've eliminated, or eliminated the impervious coverage variance that was on Lot B, and I believe Lot A was very, very close to like the nearest square foot of impervious coverage. By eliminating the pools and the various patio area that surrounded the pools, we are now fully in compliance with impervious coverage for both lots. We've also revised the grading of the site, and we've changed the roof design, so the roof is a shallower roof, which means both of these lots, buildings are now compliant as relates to height, so we're no longer seeking height variance for either one of the lots. So those are some of the changes we've made to the property, to the buildings themselves. We've also, in working and having discussions with the neighbor in the rear of the site, the house that fronts on Mitchell Road to the south, we've modified the grading and drainage design that has been shown on the plans previously. Previously, we had areas of runoff, basically some steeper slopes between the two houses along Gates Avenue. There was concern that that would create, whether it's a mix of erosion, or I'd say higher velocity stormwater overflowing the grass along, between these two properties. We've adjusted that by providing a set of walls, basically throughout the site, to help more gradually step down the grades between the two houses. Again, just naturally, there's a significant grade difference on this property, approximately, you know, 11, 12 feet of grade between Gates Avenue and the rear of the site. So just naturally, today, rainwater typically, when it hits the property, will naturally flow towards the rear of the site. That's how the natural grade works. But again, by instituting a series of walls, we're hoping to...
I'll just hold it.
That works.
Yeah, I was gonna say unplug it.
There's a switch on the bottom that you can...
Okay. In addition, what we've done is we provided a swell along the back of the property, so any rainwater that does work itself down the more gradual slope behind the site will hit a swell. The swell directs that extra rainwater to the property limits along Mitchell Road. I think there was an engineering comment, there's a one contour that probably should be reworked in the grading plan, but the intention is that that swell would then allow for an outfall into a swell that currently exists that goes under the driveway and adjoining the lot to the rear of us, and then continues down Mitchell Road in that direction. That is only for the stormwater that hits the actual ground around the site. We also have a series of seepage pits, which collects the rainwater off of the roof and puts it within the seepage pits on each one of the properties themselves. We have provided the calculations as it relates to infiltration rates that show that there is good infiltration rates for both of these properties, so that the water can not only be stored on the site within the seepage pits, but will then be able to infiltrate back into the water table below the property. Obviously, you have your board's engineer who's reviewed that, I don't want to speak for her and her review, but we believe that the design here has shown that we do meet the ordinance requirements in terms of making sure that we have enough storage for the four-inch storm, as well as, again, the, I would say enhancement of the swell that, again, now will direct the prop, the stormwater directly into the public ditch along Mitchell Road. Again, that ditch along Mitchell Road is getting the rainwater today anyway, that's the natural flow of the, of the rain. We are just, again, collecting it and directing it more exactly than what happens today, which likely overflows our property, and then naturally overflows the property in the rear and works itself to that same ditch. We can install some riprap or some stone in the area where our swell meets the roadway swell, just to help prevent any erosion in the area. You see that commonly, again, even in the, if you're driving along Gates or Mitchell Road, you see that on the swells that you see on the side to side, some stone in there to help prevent some erosion. We have no issues doing that. The benefit of the swell also is that on the, on the south side of the swell, we're able to utilize basically a berm area to provide plantings along the property, property rear frontage. We have provided a, and this is not the landscaping plan, that's on the next sheet, we provided a series of green giant arbivites, as well as, I think, a couple other trees to help provide some separation. I believe in talking with the neighbor, the spruce trees that we have provided, they'd actually prefer if they were all arbivites, so we have no issue with, again, based on whether it's your board's professionals or any neighbors switching out trees to help ensure proper screening of the properties in the rear. I would like to hand out, and I do have an exhibit, which is the outlines of the buildings on aerial image, and I have a full size as well, but this is so the board could see.
Yeah, Deb, you, last one was A, what, three or four?
A3. So this should be A4.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, A4 for the record, I know it's being handed out, is titled Site Plan Exhibit, Sheet 2 of 2. It has a date prepared of February 14th, 2023. What it shows is a aerial image that was from March 21st, 2021, almost two years ago. And what we've overlaid on that is the two building plans, so you can see how the building lays out as it relates to the adjoining lots nearby. What we are attempting to show here is...
I got two.
The general compliance with not only the lot sizes, but also the lot setback, the building setbacks from Gates Avenue compared to the neighboring lots. If you're looking at it, we are providing a 25-foot front yard setback for our buildings along Gates Avenue, where the requirement is 50 feet. If you look up and down Gates Avenue, other than the lot that is across the street from Lot A, nearly every other building has a front yard setback that is very comparable to ours. Some are a little less in setback, some may be a foot or two greater, but again, the intention here is that the front yard setback as it relates to Gates will not compliant with the zoning ordinance, and we are seeking a variance, obviously, but the, we are looking to provide something that is similar to the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood. I want to remind everyone on the board, because it's been a while, but this is an application in which we are currently two lots, and we are looking to maintain two lots. What we are essentially doing is taking a 7,000-square-foot lot, and a significantly larger lot, and balancing out those two lots. The 7,000-square-foot lot would have variances, even as an existing, for lot size, for lot width, and any development on that lot would likely trigger some sort of side yard variance. The buildable area from side to side on that existing lot is 30 feet wide, so you'd have to have a building, a house, that's only 30 feet wide, which is about the width of a two-car driveway. So if you had a two-car garage, that's essentially the width of your house, if you were to build on that existing lot, so you'd have lot, side yard setback issues with building on that lot. That lot and the larger lot both have significant areas in which there are critical areas as it relates to slope. So again, any development on the smaller lot, you would be hit with the same critical areas, variances that we are seeking today. In fact, our variances are less, because we're able to actually shift the building, the Lot A building, a little bit further from that critical area, which is most prominently in the northwest corner of the property. So when thinking about this development, the, I, the concept of, isn't there a zero variance plan? In existing conditions, these lots have variances that come along with it with any development, whether it's this development or not. So we believe this application, again, moving the lot line, balancing it out, providing a house that meets the height requirements, meets the impervious coverage requirements, meets the FAR requirements, and is essentially seeking variances as it relates to front yard, which we believe is consistent with the Gates Avenue development houses you look along the property. Lot area, which again, we do have an undersized lot today, but if you look at the lot areas here, for lots A and B, and compare it to the other houses that you see on the, on the properties, on Gates Avenue, Lot B, our smaller lot, is essentially the same size, in fact, it's a little bit bigger than our adjoining property to the, to the west. It's about the same size as the next property further out to the west. It's greater in size than three of the other buildings that are on the north side of Gates Avenue. Our smallest lot is bigger than those lots along Gates Avenue. So again, we are not looking to construct anything that is, I believe, out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, and I think that's illustrated within this image here on, on this plan. In addition, you know, besides the variance, I would say betterment, that we've been looking to either from the existing case or as this application has gone on, the engineering design has improved, thanks to the board's questions and the public's questions and input, as it relates to the drainage design, the grading of the site, the landscape of the site, and the aesthetic of turning the building to face Gates Avenue. We believe all has been moving this application in a forward direction. Again, I think that summarizes the changes that we have made to date.
Do the board planner have any questions?
I don't actually. I would like to hear from, actually, the board engineer with regard to the adequacy of the stormwater management.
Board engineer.
No problem, thank you. First, Mr. Sekler, thank you for, you know, going through a fairly detailed review of all the changes. They were quite extensive in reviewing this application when it came back. It was noted, you know, all these changes, and I went back to my list, which was, you know, from the public, from the board, from my perception, and I do note that a lot of the concerns, you know, have been addressed in a manner in this application. We did also, I believe it was at that September hearing, ask for additional information as it related to soil testing, which you did, did speak about, and we did ask for information on a groundwater mounding analysis, which you also did complete. If you want to just, you know, comment or two about, you know, what conclusions you came to in that report, and I will state that, you know, the, the conclusions that Mr. Sekler came to in that report, we had a couple back and forth with a few minor tweaks to it, but then, you know, we were, we were in, in agreement on the, those conclusions, so I don't want to speak for his report, so if you want to, you know, get those into the record.
Yes. Yeah, yes, as part of this stormwater design, not only are we looking to make sure that the capacity of the system could support the four-inch storm or something greater than the four-inch storm, what's also important is to make sure that when the water does infiltrate the soils, it does not negatively affect the groundwater table on adjoining properties. So that is what is called a storm, grounding analysis, mounding analysis, which is, again, to make sure that when the water does re-enter the, the, does re-enter the water table, it does not negatively affect the adjoining properties. And again, with the technical tweaks that was recommended by your board's engineer, we could confirm the conclusion that the locations of the seepage pits and where they'll be reinfiltrating the soils will not have a negative impact on the groundwater on the adjoining neighboring properties.
Thank you. In our, in my letter, my most recent letter dated January 30th, there, there are a couple grading comments and considerations in there, none of which I consider, you know, anything that's major that would change this design, some just technicalities on some of the, you know, making sure the swell continues around the corner. My overall opinion of the stormwater design is it, it is adequate, it meets code as far as, you know, the runoff from the buildings. By adding the retaining walls to the rear, they are able to basically take the amount of runoff in one instance and, and cut it into portions, so you don't have runoff from the entire back of the yard going toward the neighboring house, which was one of the main concerns that we saw last time. The addition of the swell in the rear has, has a twofold help as it relates to both capturing the runoff from some of the lawn area in the back, and allows for additional landscaping back there, which is definitely a positive improvement. Landscaping near the swell also helps with the infiltration of water and reabsorption of the water through those plants in the rear. One of my concerns with the plan, and it's, you know, I use that term concern, but is the retaining wall layout, one of the retaining walls runs directly along a property line, is that correct?
Correct.
So as far as, you know, my, my concern is not for the construction of the wall, or, you know, any, anything on stability, it's really from the point of view of, should this be built, how are we going to maintain the wall? Whose responsibility is that wall going to be? Because when it's right on a property line, you know, even if it's on property A, you know, it might impact property B if it starts to lean, and then who has the responsibilities? So, you know, a recommendation for that is to have, you know, an easement in place as part of the subdivision for the maintenance repair and all of that as it relates to the retaining wall. Is that something that the, you know, the applicant would, would be amendable to adding to the subdivision plan?
Yeah, yes, and...
And I did know, in my review, I was, and I apologize for this, I had taken the small square that you were showing in Mitchell Road at the end of the swell to be a catch basin, but based on your testimony, that is not a catch basin, is that correct?
Correct, and, and you also, I think, caught, we had a unfortunate pipe that was extending into nowhere, from nowhere into Mitchell Road. It's not intended for us to have a pipe connection into Mitchell Road.
Okay.
From, from the, from the building, yes.
That clarifies, I knew one of the two things wasn't, wasn't adding up correctly. So as you stated, the swell would then come down to Mitchell Road, where there's an existing swell, it would be reinforced with some large stone riprap, and that would continue down the road. In your opinion, the, the area of runoff that's going to be directed to the swell and then directed to the road, is that less than or equal to the area of runoff that currently runs toward that area today?
It'll be less than, because of the seepage pits that we're installing. It would be equal if we had no seepage pits on the site, but in this case, it'll be less than in, in time and in quantity.
In time and in quantity, so you're going to see less runoff to Mitchell Road than what you see today under existing conditions.
Correct.
Excellent. Let's see. Based on the new layout, water and sewer are both going to be in Gates Avenue, so we would be using grinder pumps or similar?
Yeah, again, in, working with the sewer and where that connection will be, it may end up being in Mitchell Road and have to be basically... and have to be basically brought over. Um, that's still obviously being worked on, uh, when capacity is available.
Excellent. And then again, just so it's on the record, septics are not going to be utilized on this.
Correct. No septic on this site.
I think those are all my comments for now. Um, should the board have any questions on, on any of the elements? Just, you know, chime in and let me know, um, as it comes to it. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, um, we have reviewed the January 30th, 2023 correspondence of Missinello in that there were 22 points, 20 points, um, and then two additional points, one and two under drainage. Uh, the applicant will comply with, uh, has or will comply with all of those, uh, those points in Missinello's January 30th correspondence.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask a few questions to start it off, or Dennis, what do you want to?
Is it okay if I ask?
Yeah. There was no planning testimony. I didn't know if we needed him to conclude with some planning testimony. I know we had done that at, at the same time. We finished him up. Do you want me to take that from him now? All right. So Mr. Sackler, uh, you'll know in the January 28th, 2023 memo with the planner, obviously, we all know, uh, C1, C2 variances. Can you give your opinion as a professional planner, for which you were previously qualified and still hold those licenses, uh, how, uh, we satisfy both C1 and C2 variance requests?
Yes. Um, and again, just to reiterate, C1 variances are hardships, uh, typically due to the topography of a site or, uh, specific unique condition of a property. Um, and C2s are variances that, um, we believe that there is a, uh, better planning alternative versus the strict compliance with the ordinance. Um, as it relates to items, um, and, and really, a lot of the variances that we're seeking are kind of double variances. It's something that's on Lot A and Lot B. So it's the same variance, just doubled because we're, we're in a subdivision case. Um, we are seeking a variance as it relates to lot size, uh, as I spoke to, um, previously. Again, uh, the lot on the left, which I guess is the, uh, the old, what would be Lot A, uh, is in its current case about 7,500 square feet, and we're making it 17,967 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is, 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 um, required. So again, we're obviously making a condition that is, is, um, a significantly undersized and helping bring it a little bit more in compliance. And we do have this exhibit, which I think was previously marked. Did we have this bar graph exhibit at some point? My marker fell over the side.
That's the blue one. That, that's A3 for the record.
A3? I reprinted it, so it's.
Has it changed at all?
It has not changed. It may have gotten larger.
It can still be A3.
Okay. A3, uh, and again, for the board, this was called average lot size, and this was along Gates Avenue. And what we showed here is 23 lots along Gates Avenue from our property west, including our side of Gates Avenue and the north side of Gates Avenue. And what we're showing here is that our two lots, Lot B and Lot A are the bar charts in red for the proposed lot areas, and that would rank us 18th out of 23 and 15th out of 23 in terms of lot size on that block. So clearly, the, um, both of these lots are greater than the average lot, they're greater than the median lot, and we believe fit in more in character with the neighborhood than if we were to keep the lots as they are today, which would be one very large lot, which would actually be all the way to the right of the page on that bar chart. And then the small lot at 7,000 square feet would be all the way at the left side of the page. So we believe again that the proposed plan is a better planning alternative than maintaining the existing design and is more consistent with the neighborhood along Gates Avenue. Next, um, set of variances, um, I would say is the, the fact that we are in a corner lot. Um, we do have, uh, a property that is undersized in terms of lot width on Mitchell Road. Again, this is a, um, a factor of this property. No matter what you build in this property, you will always have a minimum, um, width along Mitchell Road just because of the, the size. It has nothing to do with the subdivision. Any development would have a variance on this property. Even the existing house would need a variance, um, um, on Mitchell Road for its lot width just because it does not have the width along Mitchell Road. We think we provided, so we think there's a C1 aspect, and also C2 is that we've orientated the property now to face Gates Avenue, so that Mitchell Road, while it is a front yard by definition, will more appear like a side yard from people that are driving by and, um, going past this property. So we believe that we've helped mitigate the lot width, um, variance issue. Um, the next two variances are related to front yard setback, and this was, again, the exhibit A4 that I shared. Um, the front yard setback is required to be 50 feet along, um, Gates Avenue for Lot A. It actually could be 30 feet as it relates to, um, Lot B, just because it's a corner lot, the definition is slightly different. Um, in either case, again, what we showed in A4 is we believe that it is a better planning alternative to have this pro, these properties at a 25-foot setback, because that makes it more consistent with the rest of the block. In fact, if we were to push the houses any further back, we think they would actually be more of a deterrent to the residential properties in the rear. This is somewhat of a unique property. Most of the developments along Gates Avenue back up to houses that front on Doggerdy. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right. Um, however, our Lot A and a portion of Lot B, I mean, Lot B and a portion of Lot A actually back up to a property that fronts on Mitchell Road. So it doesn't have the same type of depth. We have like an intermediate lot that other lots do not have. So we do think the better planning alternative is to have the houses closer to Gates Avenue as opposed to further back. Um, then we have one variance. This is one of the odd variances, because it's only on one of the lots. As it relates to retaining wall height on Lot A, this is related to a retaining wall on the western side of the, um, house closest to the critical areas, uh, that are at the northwest portion of Lot A. Um, again, the retaining wall height is counted both for the wall itself as well as the fence, the full protection fence. Again, the applicant, um, by no means believes that they need a fence, but if the board wishes that a fence be included, we obviously would have that for protection reasons. Um, I personally, in my own house, have walls on my driveway that are five, six, seven feet tall, but, and we have no fence, but again, if the board wishes to it, we'd be happy to have it. Overall, the wall itself is about six feet closest to the house and goes down to basically flush with the, um, um, ground as you get closer to Gates Avenue. And that is actually to protect, um, some of the natural vegetation, the trees at the northwest corner, as well as to limit the amount of disturbance in critical areas. So we do believe that this variance would be a C2 variance, because by putting in this wall, we're able to protect more critical area as well as, um, provide and maintain more of the natural screening between this house and the next house to the west. So we do believe that does meet, um, a C2 variance statute. Um, then there are actually a whole bunch of variances as it relates to critical areas. Um, and in fact, I think there's nine critical area variances, um, all relating to the fact that this is a property that has, um, been burdened with critical area itself. And again, any development on this property, even if we didn't subdivide, if we were to build on the left property today, you're going to be building in critical area. If you're going to be building on the right property today, you're likely going to be building in critical area that is, I believe, man-made when that, when that house was constructed. When that house was constructed, they obviously flattened some areas and left some areas at slope or reworked the grade in that area, and they did, um, obviously create some critical areas. Um, none of those critical areas do we feel that are weird, be, weird disturbing. Have any, um, um, I'd say, um, DEP regulated areas. This is just regulated as it relates to the slope of the property per your ordinance. And again, that is nine of the variances here. And I think, again, um, I think that's, uh, C1 variance. Again, any development of the site, whether the subdivision happens or not, would be affecting those critical areas. Um, and so again, that's for nine of the, uh, those are the remaining, I believe, nine variances that we are seeking here. So again, while we are seeking, uh, I believe your planner has counted 16 variances. It's important to remember, we're talking about two lots. There's often the doubling of variance. The, over half of them are related to critical area disturbance that would be, um, required with any development on this property. And, um, the other variances, lot air, lot size, lot width, that is also, comes with this property, whether this development, uh, was proposed or not. Any development would be burdened with that same variance. So again, I believe that what we provided here is a better planning alternative. I would remind the board, we removed the FAR variances, the impervious coverage variances, the, um, uh, the height variances related to this development. So, and obviously, a whole lot since this, the whole building lot, um, since this application has started, uh, with the, again, I think the remaining variances are really what just comes with developing this property in general. Whether you subdivided the property, consolidated the lots, any development of this property would be coming with those variances.
Do you have any other questions, Liz?
No, I don't have any specific questions. I, I think if I could, if I'm accurately summarizing, um, what the witness is saying is that the variances are sort of fall into three categories. There's this sort of better zoning alternative, sort of indicating that the lot size and the front yard setbacks along Gates are actually more in keeping with what is there currently in the other lots, and that's something that the board has to sort of evaluate, whether you believe that. Um, then there are sort of the technical variance, which is the lot width on Mitchell, and I think as, as the applicant pointed out, that would, the existing lot is actually non-conforming, uh, along Mitchell. Just, that's just the length of the lot on Mitchell. So that, that's sort of more of a technical variance. The fence, um, again, that is something that would be up to the board's discretion if they would prefer to have the safety, and the applicant, uh, he didn't make it in his testimony, but I, is going to not do a chain link fence. I believe it's going to be a decorative fence, which will, um, help to minimize any, um, unsightliness of, of the fence. Um, and then the rest are, are, have to do with there being critical areas on this, on the lot. And as the applicant has said, any improvement to the existing building, even if it was just one lot, would probably trigger some of these variances, because there are critical areas in the, in the way of steep slopes throughout this lot.
Are there any restrictions on this board granting variances in critical areas?
Um, well, not beyond, um, the regular proof requirements that you have for any C1 or C2 variance. Uh, but I think what you would want to say, sorry, what I think what you want to evaluate with regard to substantial impact on the public good, which is what kind of impacts are you going to have on the neighbors? And I, I think it's the applicant or it's testimony that it's actually going to be a better situation, because the stormwater is going to be better, improved, if, if that's what I heard correctly, than what is existing now. Um, but I think that's for the board to evaluate, whether you actually think that, um, there won't be a substantial impairment on the neighbors from stormwater or, um, visual impacts.
Do the board members have any questions, starting with, uh, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you again for your testimony and for the work you've done to make modifications to this site. Uh, if you could, uh, better describe for me, I'm still really unclear with the wall design that's happening right in between the two lots, because I see a detail that shows actually a, um, an offset to the wall. So I'm curious as to how that's going to be done with regards to dealing with, um, a wall that's going straight down, what appears to be the lot lines.
Yeah, the, I think.
Look at the detail, it shows.
Yeah, there's a, there's, uh, there's a slight pitch to, to walls in order to
Understood.
have the appropriate, um, strength to hold back the, the soil. Um, and obviously, the width that you see on the plan, the line width, uh, obviously is attempting to account for the width at its long, at its widest point at the bottom. So the wall actually, as it kind of steps up, would fit within that thickness that you see there.
Which way is it stepping though? It's going right down the middle, so is it stepping to the left?
The, the low side is on the right, the high side is on the left facing the plan, so it's going to step towards the left. So the left side will have the, yes, will have, will be the higher side when looking at it.
So the, the wall, as it goes down the property line, is entirely contained on Lot A?
Correct.
The only time where it actually crosses the property line is where you have the two perpendicular walls that, that meet the one that runs parallel down the property line. Is that correct?
Correct. And I think again, you're, as you mentioned, a maintenance agreement. Even though the wall is on one of the, you know, again, it, you know, the property line is a
Yeah.
A thin, a, a point. Uh, even though it will be on one side, there'll be a maintenance agreement, so that if there is damage or something that needs to be repaired to the benefit of one of the, one of the two lots, they obviously would have the ability to make that repair.
Okay, so then drainage, so you'll have a drainage pipe down along that retain, those retaining walls, right? Constructed at the base of the walls, per your detail?
Yeah, you'd likely have some sort of, uh, seepage holes to allow some of the water to get through. Again, the way that the walls work, again, because we're going from high to low, the water also works itself over the wall. So like, as water kind of overflows, it will slow down and then overspill the wall, but obviously, water that gets into the soil, you want to prevent it from building up and having the hydrostatic pressures. That's why you have the weep holes in the wall to allow the rest of the water to go through.
Yeah, I was just trying to piece together how that drainage is going to work. So that drainage will be on the left side of the lot to the left and come down, and that's going into your tanks, or is that?
That's going into the swell. The tank captures everything that hits the building itself, so that.
Just the roof, essentially?
Yeah.
And driveway? Not the driveway?
Not the driveway. The roofs go into the seepage pits. The, anything hits the ground, whether it's the pavement or the, um, or the ground, the, the soil, will either infiltrate in the lawn or work itself into the, the swell, and it could infiltrate there, or it may work itself to Mitchell.
Gotcha. And then if you could, just help me to understand the wall configuration in the left lot, where it looks like there's like, uh, a thought of cattle chute. It looks like something that's directing down between, it looks like two walls.
Yeah.
What is the purpose of that engineered feature?
Um, some of that is the grading as it relates near the, um, garage itself to help step the grading ba, down a little, I would say, less severe. Um, we could eliminate that wall, um, but again, what we're trying to do is help, um, transition this, the grade, uh, down, but also, we want to make sure that in terms of what we have, um, for the foundation or the, or the basement, that we don't have too much exposure in that area of the house. We don't want to basically have almost like a hole where you see, you know, I would say, an extra half-story, um, in that area.
Right. That's the garage side, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Again, it's basically foundation. It'd be, you'd have a half a story foundation reveal.
So that, that is slab on grade?
Yes.
On the right side that you're grading to?
Correct.
Um, and then the area in between those walls is essentially flat?
Correct.
Based on those walls?
Correct.
Just doesn't seem like that's a lot of usable space if, if that could be somehow adjusted.
We could probably pitch the angle a little bit, but again, what we were trying to do is not to have like a half a story of uncovered foundation in that area. You know, it could be mitigated with plantings and things like that, you know? It could be almost reworked as a planting bend and things of that nature.
That was, you know, my thought is, we do commonly see, you know, a stepped or a tiered retaining wall similar to this fashion, and often what's done is that middle area becomes like a planting, a landscape feature, and it works in. And it also helps to hide some of the exposure of the wall too. Um, so, you know, you can, you, if you look at the landscaping plan, it's showing landscaping below the wall.
Right.
Which you can easily landscape between the walls as well.
We can stick it into that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would help. That's a pretty narrow area to do anything. I don't know what you'd do with that.
Yeah, it's not.
And then my only other question, I'll turn it over back to the chairman, is the, um, wetlands. I, I saw a reference to a wetlands potential, and then the thought that it was researched and there's no need for any kind of, uh, letter of interpretation or anything from the state. Could you just speak to that?
Again, we would be happy if it was required to gain a letter of interpretation. It's related to wetlands on the other side of Mitchell Road. We believe we're outside of any potential buffer area, but again, if the board, you know, makes it a condition and acts favorably, we would obviously obtain the letter of no interest. If, if we don't get a letter of no interest and they have interest, then obviously we'd be required to mitigate.
The nearest mapped wetlands is around this pond here on the, on the property on the other side of Mitchell.
Exactly. And again, there's, obviously, Mitchell Road itself is between the two, so, you know, they're.
That's all I have to know. Thank you.
Teresa?
Yeah, I just have one related to the seepage pits, and I apologize if you talked about this earlier. But are these, uh, seepage pits that are displayed on page seven different than the ones previously presented to us? Cause I, I'm seeing three. Is that?
They're slightly smaller in capacity, because the previous time we were here, the amount of impervious coverage was much greater. So
Okay.
It was sized a certain way. Also, I believe, last time we were here, we didn't have the stor, the, uh, subsurface evaluation, so we didn't have the percolation test that showed. It actually was better than what you would say is a conservative. it actually was better than what you would say is a conservative assessment. So, again, these are still oversized. These still are well over what the square footage or the cubic foot area that they need to hold. And again, your engineer's here, she could state it for herself. We believe they're oversized, but they're not as large as they were last time because they, not getting as much runoff as they were last time.
Correct. They're proportionally resized and a proportional-
Okay.
-change in impervious coverage on the site, but they still have adequate capacity for what they are. I think last time either was only two.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I mean, so.
And I think last time we might not have had the full details on the design, and we, because of the additional investigating, they've done, they've really more open on exactly what they needed there, so this, this design is more consistent in, you know, the site than what we previously saw.
And I know I asked you this last time, and I just apologize, I'm forgetting. These end up being below ground?
Yes.
Okay. Just wondering for the aesthetics of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alan?
No questions.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to jump on a couple of questions that were asked already. Back to the retaining wall. On the cross-sectional picture, diagram, you do show a pipe at the base and behind the last row. Where does that pipe go? It's in the top picture?
Yeah. Again, that pipe, one, it's a perforated pipe, so part of the purpose of that is to, again, help infiltrate. It obviously, we would, in this case, likely have an outfall at the bottom of the last wall, and then again, it would almost create, you know, a lead in towards the swell into the rear of the site for the, for the wall that is along the property line itself. That one will lead back. The other, the other walls that are, I'd say, perpendicular, parallel to Gates, those, we would likely have a slight slope in that, and again, work it towards so it filters any type of runoff towards the down area, and eventually will work itself into the swell as well.
Is there any benefit to running that pipage to the seepage tanks? Is that not a design? Is that, is that not an industry standard?
I would say it's not typical, but again, obviously, it can be done. You can run it there, as long as you're at a, the prop, you know, you're going to be at higher elevation to lower elevation, so gravity will do the work. But typically, you would use the seepage pits to catch runoff from impervious surfaces versus the pervious.
Right, and you resize the buildings, so they're less coverage, right? They're taking less of a footprint. So that, that back retaining wall on the, I'm going to say that's Lot A, I'm a little concerned about where that water's going, even with the berm, the plantings, and as well as the swell. It's still a concern for me, because you are now directing in water to a certain area.
And again, if, if the board wishes and if the board's professional believes that that should be directed, you know, the wall piece should be directed to the seepage pit, we would have no problem directing it that way-
Okay.
If that helps alleviate that concern.
I would like to see that. And those tanks, are they 500, 1,000? What is the capacity?
I'd have to look at the exact spec. They could be made to many different sizes. I don't know.
Trying to see what we ended up with, 96.
Because they roughly go down about eight feet, right? Is that about the depth with all the stone, quarry down below and the barrier and everything else that goes along?
Yeah, 60-inch tank with an additional foot or so below it.
Yep.
So the, the only concern, too, is with putting the retaining walls, drainage right into the seepage pit, is you're going to be more prone to get sediment and other-
Sediment?
Other, you know, materials into the tanks. It's going to require them to be, you know-
You can get shingle, you can get shingle grade.
Yeah, we tend to like to put just clean water toward the seepage pits to eliminate that, so you don't have clogging, so you don't have backups and things like that.
Okay.
The amount of water that's going to get to the pipe in the retaining wall, I haven't in my experience seen that it's been problematic, because you have the water that goes over the top of the wall, you have the water that comes through and it's hitting a stone bed first. So it's infiltrating through the stone, and then the pipe is at the very bottom, so it's only for what makes it down that far, and then it could still continue to infiltrate from there. And then there's also weep holes out of the wall. So there's a lot of different ways. So it's not, again, Matt can resize them for that, but you do have the issue of introducing sediment into the tanks, and it, it's probably not going to result in that much of a difference.
Yeah, it's not as concentrated as, when you think of a pipe, as Sam mentioned, you know, it goes, there's, it's like the fifth option of water to make it down to that point.
Okay. The top of the seepage pits, there's a manhole cover?
Yeah, like essentially a manhole cover.
And it's roughly how big?
The, I believe that we are sizing a 24-inch diameter hole, so it'd be about two-foot opening.
Because there'll be three of those times two between the two lots.
Yes. But again, that's just the opening to re, the actual-
It's going to be much bigger.
Much wider, but yeah.
Yeah, I get it. That's just the-
At the surface, it's only two-foot diameter.
That's the top and bottom. Okay. I noticed on the soil sampling report, where you have TP2, TP1 for Lot A, I think TP1 took a lot of water, I think, if I, if I read that report correctly. Just going to my notes.
Yes.
Yeah, that was wet at the bottom. I think that, that one and TP4 was wet at the bottom. Are those seepage pits accounting for that water there? That might be a water table. I think it's only six feet down that went.
Yeah, the, the grounding, the groundwater mounding analysis accounts for that in its design, so it-
So there could be water at the bottom of that seepage tank forever?
Yes, I mean, obviously, it, yeah, it could be in the stone below, or it can be above it, yes.
Okay. I noticed that all the test sites contain water or were moist.
Yes.
And that was days after it rained. Is there any concerns around these seepage pits with hurricanes that might come through?
In what concern?
Well, last couple of hurricanes that have come through have dumped substantial amounts of water. Is there any point that these seepage pits will be inundated or overtaken?
So, the seepage pits have two purposes. One is to store the water, and the two is to help infiltrate into the soils. What we saw from the permeability tests, again, obviously, there's groundwater at, at some point, but the permeability tests are showing, I believe, in excess of, on average, four inches per hour being able to be caught in, into the water. Your typical, and again, I know you're saying hurricane, but just going into your standard storm that you guys look at here is a four-inch rainfall over 24 hours, not four inches in one hour, which is what the permeability was showing. And that is about probably like almost a 10-year storm, maybe like a seven-year or something in that five to 10-year range. So, again, I think that the permeability will assist in the hurricane, but I think it's also remember that in the case of a hurricane, this property would have been sending water to neighboring property without any retention at all. So it would just go there. So again, obviously, if you add, you know, if you're getting six inches an hour of rain, you know, some, you know, biblical rainstorm, you, you, this would be inundated, wouldn't be able to, you know, infiltrate fast enough, and would only be able to hold a certain amount. But again, in that case, that all would have been going to the neighbor directly in the first place, and we wouldn't be able to capture the, you know, X gallons that we're holding today.
Thank you.
Matt, where is the emergency overflow? Drywalls are typically designed with an overflow, so in case of the, that we like to say the NOAA S R event, when it is inundated and it does backflow, where, where does that go?
Yeah, so the backflow will be towards the front of the house.
Toward the front of the house.
Yeah.
Regarding the, the houses, I think there was going to be, they were going to be three stories, but they're now going to be two stories from Gates Ave. Is that correct? With a walkout?
Yes, they're two stories from, they've always been two stories from Gates Ave. We adjusted the grading and adjusted the roof to be able to get this to be per zoning compliant as it relates to the stories.
So if I'm looking at it from Gates, I'm just seeing a normal two-story, kind of fits in with the decor of the neighbors around. And then if I come around the back, I should see still two stories of a buffer of arborvitae, a decorative fence. I'm not going to see a wall of retaining walls. I'm not going to see a straight up, I'm not going to be stuck in a, like a stadium, to say.
Correct, correct.
Should be more aesthetically pleasing.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Just following on for that. Dennis, are you okay? The retaining wall on A, can you just talk to the heights? You mentioned six foot on some of the other ones, but what are the heights generally?
So-
Starting with Lot A.
So Lot A, at, and I'm talking about the retaining wall that is parallel to Gates, so perpendicular to the lot lines. That wall is just under four feet at, at the property line, and then works itself, as you get close to the house, it goes to zero. So it's a maximum four where the property line is, and works itself to zero feet as you get towards the patio. The retaining wall that then is parallel to Gates Avenue but closest on Lot B, again, a little less than four feet at the, you know, basically extended. So all the retaining walls, except for the one that's in the front of the house, that is near the, I'd say, closest to the area that has the steepest slopes, the most critical area, all the retaining walls in the back of the property are four feet or less. And again, I think that was part of the idea is that with the swell, with the berm on top of the swell, with the plantings, it helps mitigate any type of visual impacts of those retaining walls.
And just to follow on from what Tom was saying, so behind Lot A, the house there, there is a retaining wall, right? So you can see, if you're standing on the property below, you'll see a retaining wall, right?
If you look through the trees and the berm, yes.
In the winter?
Yeah, yes. Well, arborvitae's-
Does the deer get to it?
But there is a retaining wall. It's already clear, there's a retaining wall that goes across half the property there, right?
Yeah, but that retaining wall is, and I'm estimating because I don't have it, it's probably about 50 or so feet off the back property line. Again, this zone allows for the actual house to be 25 feet off the property line. So we could have built a two-story house 20 feet closer to the neighboring property versus what we've designed.
Right. And then where's the patio at the back of the house? Where does that, what's the elevation there? What happens to the retaining wall at the end? It seems to go into-
It just meets it. So the retaining wall is like six inches above the ground when it's at the patio, and then it kind of grows as you go away from the patio.
It goes away? Oh, I guess the height goes down, yeah.
Yeah, this is where your function-
Flat on top of it.
Exactly.
So firstly, thank you for doing the changes that you have done. Let me just say that first. And two stories, I think one of them was three stories, wasn't it?
The small one.
Three stories.
Anyway, it's going to be three, so both two, which is presumably good. Lower height. I'd like to talk more about the swell. I'd like to know the condition of the swell that goes down Mitchell Avenue it's going to tie into, and how that's maintained. And I'd like to understand a bit more about the maintenance agreement between the two properties, because that's, and it's fine when it's the same owner. It's a lot easier, right? The handshake's a lot easier than what happens in the future. I'd be curious to know what your thoughts are there. And I know you mentioned referencing your testimony about conversation with the neighbor. I'd like to understand a little bit more about how that conversation went as well, if that's okay.
So I'll start from the last question with the neighbor, and again, the neighbor may be here, I don't know, they could speak for themselves. But we had a couple of iterations of plans, you know, teams meetings. I think the, the applicant may have met with him separately, but from an engineer-to-neighbor perspective, we had a number of conversations in which they provided, I don't want to say wish lists, but some design thoughts that we could incorporate.
Sorry, let me be clear, that's neighbor to the-
Immediately to the rear of us. So it's the house that fronts on Mitchell Road.
Yeah, okay, just want to make sure it's clear.
And the discussions seemed to be related to trying to ensure that as little stormwater gets to their property, with the understanding that to the natural pitch of the site, we can't reverse the, the slope of the site to the other direction. To mitigate visibility, so that was where the berm and the arborvitae came in. And again, it was, it was honestly, you know, working with them and their idea to, to prepare a design that had a swell on the back of the site. That property has the, the, I would say, the beginning of the existing swell along Mitchell. It's like a pipe under their driveway, and then it continues, you know, above ground or on top of the, the ground as it goes down the, the site and hits inlet at Doggerdy, if I pronounced that right, and Mitchell, at that intersection, there's an inlet at that location. I think there was a comment in the engineer's review letter about ensuring that that inlet is clear and has capacity, and if it needs to be cleaned, things of that nature, but that is the essential down point. Again, the natural flow of this property, if you went, if it rained tonight, the water in this current condition would overflow on this property and eventually either work into that neighbor's lot, you know, with, you know, just over land, or found its way directly into the Mitchell Road swell. So we're sending water to the same direction. We're just by, we're detouring it, trying to go around the property that fronts on Mitchell, and sending it directly to the swell as best as possible by using a berm and swell design. So that's, again, the drainage, the swell, and the neighbor question that you had. I think you had a question about-
The maintenance of the-
Maintenance retaining wall. Now, I'm going to lean a little more on the guy to my left. Just because when it comes to easement agreements, maintenance agreements, a little out of an engineer's world, but again, I'm sure it's something that can be written in a condition, and I do see often, sites get developed where there's a retaining wall just on one property or just on the other, so I imagine it's not unusual.
Yeah, what I envision, and I could leave the, the board attorney to give me direction on it, would be that when the subdivision deed with a lot line move is filed, we would also file some type of easement agreement at that point, property to property, so that there would be no issue of shaking hands as neighbors. It would be a legal obligation and right of one lot who would be superior to the other with regards to the maintenance obligations, or at least the access to have maintenance.
And if the application is granted with that condition, it would be subject to review and approval of myself and/or our township attorney, whatever the board prefers.
And that's a common enough situation?
It's a form.
That's not-
Yeah, it's a form. I just have to change the name in the lot and block, honestly.
It's a normal practice, you say?
Correct.
And from my perspective, it would be reviewed in detail comprehensively, notwithstanding the fact that it might be someone else's form. And it might even change in language, but it would be subject to my and/or or township attorney's review and approval, if that's the way the board goes.
Is this a deed issue, or is this a subdivision map issue, or both?
It's a subdivision, it would be subdivision deeds that would be filed, but if the easement is contained and or cross referenced within the deeds, then it's an, it's a, an obligation of the parties. It's not just a contractual obligation, it's a legal obligation that's recorded.
Yeah, I think it would be in both, chairman. Obviously, it's going to be in the, in the, in the, in the plan, and then it'll also be memorialized in the filing at the clerk's office.
Right. Just one last question. Still my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is the very steep slope area in Lot A, and now the house is still going to funnel any water down towards, towards the swell, towards the, I guess, the southwest corner. The seepage pits are to the right. I just wondered how much capacity or ability there is for that water, you think, to confidently go down either the swell or the seepage pits? Again, it's a very steep, you know, the section, right? And the house is, literally is a funnel still. Do you think you've addressed that?
So we've tried to slow down the speed by using the wall design, so you don't have, you know, like someone going, a kid going down a, on a sled, you know, catching speed. So we're trying to, you know, incrementally slow that down. Again, that was actually working, again, with the neighbor. Their design, their thought was, can we institute a series of walls to help reduce the speed of the, the rainwater coming down the hill? So I believe that helps mitigate and slow down that speed. Again, I believe that we've located the swell to catch the natural flow of water as we've designed the site and graded the site. Obviously, I think that your board's engineer found a couple of contours that should wrap a one-way or tie in a different point, and would be happy to work with, with her and her office in ensuring. But again, the way we've designed it, we believe that the swell accurately captures the stormwater coming off the, coming down on the ground, and then the seepage pits- and then the seepage pits will take anything that's above gra, of, hits the building and goes into the, to the water, into the soil.
Lots of belated point, on the west side of A, yeah, of A, there's no retaining walls other than the one that goes perpendicular to Gates. Right, so there's no retaining walls outside. It just goes straight down and presumably into the swell at the bottom is your cash hole, right?
A, the left side of A, yeah, the west side of A, yes.
That's the west bit?
Yes, that, that, the way that, again, we could extend the swell further to the west if need be, if the board engineer feels that that's valuable. We believe that the way that we've graded the slope as it goes down to the rear of the house will send the water to the swell, but we could definitely extend it even further to the west property line as much as possible.
And if you did, would you, could you move the seepage pits as well?
We definitely could with the seepage pit. Again, we just don't want to bring it any closer to the neighboring property lines for the concern of the mounding analysis that is performed. But we definitely could move it further west if need be. The only thing is there are a few, four or five trees that are, we're looking to maintain closer to the southwest property corner that, again, bringing the swell there could affect them depending on where we round it. Again, we could maybe even, instead of doing a swell that's parallel to the property line, we could almost catch it a little bit further up the hill and avoid those, those trees a bit.
Almost looks like the intent that you had here because you do have a small, you know, not as much of a defined swell, but you have a little bit of a swell along the western property line, which is kind of my thought was to continue that, so it bends around the corner.
How confident you, would you want to see some modifications to this? Or are you confident with what you see?
No, the intent here of what he has is, is not going to change vastly. Well, you know, what we're talking about is going to, you know, to, to a layperson who's going to look at like lines on paper that are changing. It will, it will change the swell slightly, but nothing that's, you know, not practical or not possible in this location.
I just want to make sure, as much as possible, the water going down that side.
Yeah.
Because to me, that's the steep, that's where rain, that's where it's going to speed, velocity of the water is going to be such that it may over, may over, you know, overflow the swell, avoid the swell even.
They actually, the, the way the grades are proposed on that western side, so you do have the steepest slopes in the top left corner, but as you go down and you see where it starts to curve and create a little swell along the western side, they've actually flattened the slope through that area. So it's, it's going to go from its fastest, but it is going to start to level off and then it, then get it around that corner into the swell, keeping it on one side of the berm, away from the neighboring properties. So, you know, it's a difficult site as we've discussed from the beginning with these slopes and, you know, the, the idea of using the, the berm and the, and the swell is certainly most protective of the downstream properties of, of any of the designs that we've seen today.
I just want to make sure that that corner in particular, that whole, from that top, actually, that whole side is protected as, as much as it can possibly be.
Absolutely, and I'm confident that, you know, you know, Matt's office can rework a couple of these grades just to better define it and wrap it around that corner.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
Good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It better be, I already wrote it as an addition if necessary, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sackler, thank you very much for your testimony and answering all the questions.
Make sure you're using a mic.
But I still have a few questions about swells and the drainage. Just to pick up on what Mr. Hands was talking about, where the drainage is along the back of the property and it's going to meet the existing swell where the pipe crosses under the driveway. Is there a curb in that area that's, or the water coming down from Mitchell? That funnels into that pipe that goes under the driveway, correct?
Correct, yes. The natural runoff of Mitchell, I think there's actually swells on both sides of Mitchell, so it either goes to the east side or the west side depending on which, yes.
So half the roads go into the pipe. Do you know what the pipe size is? Is that taken into account, your analysis, if you're putting new swell water into that?
We did not, again, because we believe that we're sending less stormwater there than what goes there today. That said, I have no issue with performing an analysis. I think that might have been a comment in the review letter. There was a couple stormwater comments that we would ensure that, you know, in taking a look at that pipe. Again, looking at it, my guess is it's probably a twelve inch, but again, that's from visually, I didn't take out the ruler and throw it on it. But we could do a quick sizing analysis to make sure that...
If you don't think it would be a problem, there's not going to be that much water coming from the swell in the rear?
No, I, I don't think so. And again, I think we have a pretty decent pitch in that area as well, so I'm not concerned with, you know, leaves and things like that, you know, building up in that area.
Okay, and then the water, you said there's no curb, so everything will be just from the edge of pavement? It'll be stone lined? You're basically going to create a channel to channel swell coming from the back of the property through the pipe?
Yes, it was requested by the neighbor after we had shown him these final plans, which again are obviously being somewhat reworked, that their request was to add some stone to help, you know, some riprap area to make sure that we don't have any erosion in that area. And again, we'd be happy to take that. Obviously, that's in the public right of way, I believe. So again, I don't know if there's any specific approvals we would need to put stone in the public right of way in that swell, but again, we think that would be, and that's the right, that's the public swell, not the private swell.
Okay. And then just to pick up what Mr. Richardson was asking earlier. You said the roof drains drain to the back into the swell or into the...
Roof goes to seepage pits.
Seepage pits, from the front of the building also?
Every, everything that hits the roof goes to seepage pit.
Okay, then the swells in the front of the buildings along Gates. Am I correct that there's two small swells shown there?
Yes. One swell is in front of the house on lot A. That basically collects the water, sends it to the driveway and then the driveway again works itself eventually downstream to the swell in the rear of the site. The other swell is a roadway swell that would basically be in the public right of way. It's just part of the grading along Gates Avenue in front of lot B.
Okay, now where is that swell going to empty out? Because that catch basin, I'm pretty sure has a headpiece and there's curb on it right there.
Yeah.
So it's not going to flow into that.
My guess is, I, I believe the intention is going to turn the quarter and become part of the Mitchell Road swell, but I would need, I would need to double check that with your engineer.
Then that swell water from the front of the building would be joining the Mitchell Road water and all going through that assumed twelve inch pipe in the back.
And again, that's the, again, if you look at, I know, I don't know what size plan you're looking at, but if you see the, the existing topo in the area, that's the existing topography is along the front, along Gates Avenue. If you're on our property, it is pushing the water naturally in the existing condition towards Mitchell Road.
Okay, so there would be no way to get it into the catch basin because then I think it could...
Yeah, but you have a curb, you, there's the, it's an asphalt curb in front of the site today.
Okay, so it's going to basically drain out onto Mitchell? And again, would it be to prevent any erosion or sediment from washing into the road?
We could...
You could put riprap, would you?
Yes.
Put riprap?
Yes.
Okay, and then the very last question I have is, I'm just looking at the limit of disturbance plan and along the back property line, it looks like your limit of disturbance crosses the property line. Am I looking at that correctly?
If it is, that's probably an error. Again, the limit of disturbance in the back property line is related to the creation of the swell and the, and the berm. So obviously, there is what is considered disturbance. Let me work myself through the set here. Yes, that should not be crossing over, that should be limited to the property line. Yes, that'll be corrected.
You're not going to go encroach on...
Unless they want us to plant a tree on their property, that's the neighbor we've been talking with, but...
Discussion to be had.
Correct, not part of these, this application.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Can you point me to the actual fill calculation? I'm sorry, I couldn't find it.
I think your board engineer had requested it as part of the most recent review letter that we just received. We have not finalized or provided it to this date, the fill calculation.
So do you have a number or are close to a number?
I would be guessing at this point, and I know you don't want me to guess because you warned me last time not to guess. So I'm going to say I don't know because I don't want to be yelled at for guessing.
I'm curious to know how much fill you've got to bring in and I will accept an approximation.
I assume at some point we will be taking a break. Can I run that calculation during the break tonight?
Okay. The other thing that I'm interested in is by inspection there are a number of large trees on the small lot. And I see on your demolition plan that you've Xed out a whole bunch of them. Is that the end of it?
Yes, what we've shown Xed out are trees that, these are the trees that we believe would need to be removed, whether it's for the building itself, the regrading, the swell. All that is what's shown on the Xed Out Plan. That said, we did not perform a study to determine the health of any of these trees. Some of these trees that are being Xed out could be dead trees today. Some of them could be live trees. These were just, you know, trees that were found by the surveyor on the plan.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a couple...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The... Mr. Sackler, on Ms. Laney's January 28th memo, page 10, item 3, there's a zoning table revision to be made that the comment still remains. I take it the applicant will stipulate to making that revision, rear yard setback on proposed lot B, a corner lot.
Rear yard.
Page 10, the planner's memo, number three, Tom, you'll make the revision.
You refer to things, excuse me, you referred to a couple of things as rear yards and it's a corner lot which doesn't have a rear yard.
The side yard, it's not, not a big ask.
No, yes, yes.
As a stipulate, thank you.
Yes, it's a twenty-five foot rear yard setback, it should only be a side yard setback.
Correct, and comment five on that same page. If the board votes favorably, the resolution should contain a condition requiring the existing home to be demolished within a certain period of time after the subdivision is perfected. Do you stipulate the same and if so, which timeframe do you propose for the board to consider? As being a reasonable timeframe, i.e. short.
I'm not familiar with the town's require... Not, not familiar with the town's requirements with regards to demolition permits. I know that some towns have very stringent requirements and noticing and things like that. Can the engineer or the planner maybe suggest a timeframe that you believe would be appropriate? And then we can add a little bit on to that maybe.
We have one hundred and eighty to file subdivision, right?
I have a six must have perfected, correct?
So I would stipulate within that time period.
Okay.
Before it's, before it's preferred.
It actually said after the subdivision is perfected, so you're going to get the one eighty potentially.
I just want, I just want to avoid a situation where you have a perfected lot going through an existing building.
Understood, yeah. We can make that a condition, that the demo application will be filed, completed?
Sure.
Filed?
Filed?
Yeah.
The demo application will be filed prior to me perfecting the subdivision?
Yeah, for confirmed, that's fine.
Thank you. And you, you addressed the various C1 and/or C2 criteria for the variance relief and I take it that included the negative criteria as well, the first prong no substantial detriment to the public good and the second prong no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance? Is that correct?
That is correct. I don't believe that any variance that we're seeking has a significant impact to the zone plan. Again, I, I do think that this is a zone plan that likely has been in place that is newer than the development patterns within this community. And I think that also leans to obviously the first prong that you mentioned in terms of the fact that I don't believe it has a negative impact to the public just in the fact that the design of these lots are consistent in size, the front yard setbacks are consistent in, in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood historic construction patterns. And we believe that we are obviously consistent with items that would look towards density as it relates to F, uh, floor-to-air ratio, height, and those impacts are no longer, we're no longer seeking variances for.
And am I correct that the proposal over its various iterations went from three lots to two lots, a two-to-two subdivision?
Correct, we are essentially just shifting a lot line, making what was a very undersized lot and a larger lot to two lots of near equal size.
And previously, there was at least one, if not two, thirty-eight foot tall structures and one three-story one. Now they're all fully conforming. In fact, both are under thirty-five feet tall, the maximum permitted, correct?
Correct.
And two lots are now facing Gates Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And the rear yards have patios, but no pools, correct?
Correct.
And lot B is a corner lot with a twenty-five foot front yard setback to Gates and fifty foot secondary front yard, front yard setback to Mitchell, correct?
As proposed, yes.
And lot A is the only retaining wall is the, that exceeds the height limit is the ten-foot tall retaining wall on lot A, that's six feet wall and four foot security fencing, correct?
Correct, and the applicant would be agreeable to removing the fence. We would still have the six-foot high wall variance, but we'd be happy to remove it if the board wishes.
And the lot coverages which previously far exceeded the maximum permitted are now all below the maximum permitted, correct?
Use far, I will just say exceeded.
The, and... I have nothing further at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
At this point, I will open the meeting to questions from the members of the public on the testimony you have just heard. If you would like to ask questions. And we're going to have to rearrange microphones.
Do they need this mic?
Yep.
Jessica Alon, forty, Mitchell Road. Thank you, Mr. Sackler, for working with our advisory engineer and some of the ideas that he has suggested, you know, in the current plan that we have now. Just a few questions that I think may have come up prior to tonight's meeting, but I just wanted to clarify. On drawing C2, there's a tree at the lower corner of the property on lot B where the true, where the tree's roots interfere with the berm and the swell. Is that tree going to interfere with the water flow? And is it possible that that tree or any other trees that may interfere with the swell could come down?
Our first, our first option would be to see if we could reroute the swell slightly to maintain the tree. If that's not possible, then yes, the tree would need to be removed if it's going to be in danger of the fact that the swells... If the swell's path may affect its root system. But again, our first option may be to, you know, slightly shift the swell around, you know, the tree, you know, a couple feet in one direction.
And that was going to be my next question was if there's roots that are severely, you know, being significantly disturbed, then is the tree going to end up dying anyway, which could be an issue?
And again, we also have not reviewed any of the trees, again, in terms of its health. That tree could be an unhealthy tree anyway and would do best for you and, and us to remove.
What are the inverts of the pipe going into the seepage pit specifically on lot B? It appears that the water needs to go uphill into the seepage pits from the piping.
Yeah, so I think, I think the board engineer caught this. I think we had the pipe going in the wrong direction and should be going actually directly from the house into the seepage pit, which would be downgrade. So that will be corrected.
That'll be made, okay. Can you explain why the overflow of the seepage pits on lot B aren't coming out of them, but instead you have them going straight out to the street and bypassing the seepage pits?
So again, I think that's what I mentioned in error, I think at one point in working with your advisory team, we were one time looking at seeing if we could connect into the swell on the other side of Mitchell Road.
Right.
And that was a remnant of it that is not intended to be, that's not part of the proposed plan.
Okay. And then is there any chance that a seepage pit can go in just for that wall instead of draining it into the swell, to just relieve some of the flow into the swell?
Which wall are you specific?
I don't remember who brought it, Mr. Jones brought up, one of the water with one of the...
A where you have a straight wall and then right behind that, closer to her property, is the seepage pit. And that's where I was talking about maybe taking that pipe and directly towards the seepage pit.
So can there be a seepage pit added just for that?
Possibly, again, I think what you still will have is what the board engineer mentioned is the fact that you typically want to have clean water into seepage pits for the sake of not having to constantly take out sediment and things like that from the seepage pit. Again, the benefit of your ordinance is actually any water going to the seepage pit, I think you have a certain level of like leaf protectors and things like that to ensure that that stuff doesn't get in. That unfortunately is not possible when you're installing a seepage pit to capture ground runoff. So again, it's possible, I just don't think it'll, over time, I don't think it'll accomplish what it is you're looking for.
Okay.
Just to build on that, that perforated pipe that's behind the retaining wall, is that not just stone around it, quarter stone around it, but is there not a filament wrapped around it? Much as, much as saying that you would do with the seepage pits? And if there is, that should catch a lot of the sediment from getting there, so it is possible.
It is, yeah, it's intended, yes, yes.
The other recommendation would be, and, and we do this often, when you have seepage pits that are capturing areas from groundwater, is you have a, a yard inlet prior to the seepage pit and you, it sump, which means it collects the sediment in the bottom. It's shallow, it's basically just a little small inlet that has a little sump in the bottom that collects the sediment. That's really easy to pull a grate off, clean it out, instead of going deep into a seepage pit. Again, if you sizes the seepage pit for the retaining wall, it's gonna be small. Because you're not talking, you know, it's ba, it's based off the, you know, size of the area that you're diverting to. So it's, it's gonna be a small pit to begin with.
Almost gonna be a yard inlet in itself.
Yeah, it's gonna be a yard, yeah, basically you're gonna have a sump yard inlet going to almost a small perforated yard inlet, so.
But, but again, definitely feasible.
It could be, it could be utilized, you know, the benefit is, is probably small, but it, there probably is a-
I think it's a peace of mind then.
Yeah, it's a peace of mind, there, there is a small benefit to it, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may state that the applicant certainly would stipulate that our engineer and the town engineer work together. You can see the collaboration here in the meeting. And if they work together, and if your engineer is willing to sign off on a plan that we present that meets all of the concerns that she's heard of the neighbors and the members of the board, would that be acceptable if we stipulated to your board engineer agreeing to a drainage plan? Rather than engineer one here at the meeting, I always feel that that's a better thing to do.
So, you know, the, the suggestion I made is, I think what you're trying to say is this is a suggestion, but we might come up with a better idea, you know, and trying to engineer right here on the fly might not be the best. So we might end up with a small sump.
In the spirit of collaborating, what we're seeing is happening right across the board here from everyone that's here, and I do appreciate that, I would like that collaboration to continue because we want to continuously improve the situation. And if that helps better the situation, then that, I think, is the right thing to do.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
And then one more question, Mr. Jones had also asked about the rear, like, view. So I know that the house height variance has been removed, but the rear view, will that still be two stories with the walkout basement? So essentially a three-story view from the rear?
Yes, it would be a three-story view if you stood on the patio. So if you're on our patio, obviously you would see all three stories. If you're on the adjoining lot, based on your visibility angle, if you're in your backyard, you're only really gonna see, in terms of the lower levels, it'll be completely screened from vegetation. If you, I think, I don't know how many stories of your house is and how high the vegetation's gonna be in three years or so. You may see, if you see over the vegetation, you may see the third story. But if you're looking at any vantage point from your first story of your house or anything that is lower than the trees, you're not gonna see that bottom story.
So with the abrevieties, I think they grow anywhere from 8 to 12 feet in a short amount of time. So outside of health conditions, it should actually improve over time as it continues to grow.
Yeah, it's about 2 feet per year.
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty aggressive, as long as a deer don't get to it.
You only get the bottom.
I know.
You'll be able to walk through the lot, but you won't be able to see anything high.
That's where the decorative fence comes into play.
And then just one more quick thing, I know you had talked about some of the riprap. It wasn't written in any plan, but can we just make sure that there's the riprap in the swale along the property line? And then also the transition from the swale on the property line to the swale under our driveway on Mitchell?
I guarantee you, your board attorney has written down that.
Thank you.
Good evening all, Paul White, 25 Dogarty Ave, Gillette.
You probably wanna hold that because you're so tall.
Is this good or no? You can hear me?
Your back.
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm gonna be flipping through stuff. That's okay. My question is for Mr. Sekler. Would it be possible, the 7,000-square-foot lot that's existing there now, could that have been connected to the large lot known as 17 Gates Avenue now?
It could be, or it could be developed independently.
I'm sorry to call you, it'd just be one big lot.
Obviously, that's an option as well as maintaining both lots as buildable lots.
Right, right, right. As of now, Mr. Sekler, you have a total of, with two houses there, there would be a total of six drywells, correct?
Yes, as designed, six drywells, it's possi, again, that's what we've shown our plan, it's possible you could get the same capacity in two drywells that are, you know, four drywells that are larger. But as we've designed, the ones we picked out are two sets of three.
Okay, let's go along with the ones you picked out. So if there was just one house constructed, you would only need three drywells, correct?
I wish you would not talk about something that is hypothetical and not a part of this application.
If it ends up being one house built?
Well, that's, that's not the application that we're dealing with. The application is for moving the lot line in two houses, and I wish you would ask questions about that. I can't ask the engineer to, to speculate about hypotheticals that he's not designed.
Okay, it seems we just keep leaning towards the two houses and the drainage and everything else, and I was trying to go towards.
I would say, the allowable impervious coverage and building coverage of a single lot, which, we could still build a house that is the size of these two houses combined. We'd be able to build as much impervious coverage as these two houses combined on a single lot. So we would technically need the same, or we could have a design that would have the same amount of seepage pits because the overall square footage, if you combine them all, would still be permitted as a single lot.
Now he opened the door, if I could say. I mean, there'd be more raw untouched land with just one house, and there would be less critical area touched, obviously. I mean, it's just logical, no one's mentioning this, that's all. I'm sorry, we'll leave it at one house anymore.
Is that a question?
No, I guess it's not, it's just more of a statement, I guess. Okay, moving on from that. Mr. Sekler, he referred to the houses seem to fit more in with Gates Avenue. And I mentioned in the past, on Mitchell Avenue, in my opinion, again, I'll refer this as a question. If you were on Mitchell Avenue, Mitchell Road, instead of Gates, could you say lot A, viewing from Mitchell, has less frontage from 40 Mitchell?
Lot A is the one that is not on the corner, is that what your question's about?
I'm sorry, I mixed them up, I didn't even know that. So B is the one on the corner?
Correct, yes.
Okay, let me fix that, thank you for correcting me, I keep getting them confused. Okay, I'll rephrase that. So if you're standing in front of, on Mitchell, facing westbound, looking at the proposed house on B, the frontage there is less than the frontage at 40 Milton?
So, I don't have every address, I'll say that the frontage on Mitchell for this property, and again, that would be whether we're a subdivision or not, the frontage on Mitchell is not changing. I believe we have more frontage than, than lot 3, which is the corner property of Gates and Mitchell. I believe we have around the same as lot 2, which is the next property north on Mitchell. And we are pretty close in size to lot 40 and 42, which are the adjoining neighbor, which I think is the person who just spoke, and then the property on Dogarty, at the corner. I think they all have approximately the same frontage as ours on, on Mitchell Road. But again, whether this is a subdivision, one house, two houses, the amount of land that we have on Mitchell Road is fixed, we can't adjust that in any way.
Right, right, I understand that. And if you're on Mitchell Avenue, and again, I know it's a different zoning, across the street, there's a 6-acre lot, there's larger lots as you go south on Mitchell. So if I'm walking on Mitchell, now, the way the lot exists, I feel fits in better. Would you consider it more congested once they are built? On lot A and B, once those houses are built, it would be more congested comparing to Mitchell Road where the lots are larger?
Well, again, I think that you mentioned, again, on the other side of Mitchell Road is an R3 zone. You obviously have a significantly large lot, that 6-acre lot that has ponds and wetlands and undeveloped area and, and everything like that. Again, the zone plan, you know, the, the town comes up with a zone and they obviously see that the east side of Mitchell Road is, has a different development pattern than the west side, whether that was their intention or their grand, either trying to fit regulations to an existing development. But clearly, they saw a difference between both sides of Mitchell Road. Again, when I look at Mitchell Road between Dogarty and Long Hill, I think this property fits in with the size, as well as, again, the way that we've situated the building, we actually comply with the setback from Mitchell Road. So the fact that our house is 50 feet off of Mitchell Road, even the corner lot is 50 feet off of Mitchell Road, I think shows that we are consistent with what the ordinance and the, what the municipality believes should be developed along Mitchell Road.
Is it safe to say there's more raw land the way it sits now than when you build?
There's more, there's more-
Raw untouched and now?
Yeah, there's more impervious coverage and building coverage in this development than what exists today on that property, yes.
And I know you keep saying there's a different zone across the street and down the street, but it's still an eyesight, and to me, it would look more congested. I, I know, it's not a question, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on from that. Also, on Gates Avenue, I know, I'm going back to what you stated, how it fits in. Comparing to this photo that you have here, lot B-
I'm sorry, what are you referring to, which exhibit?
I don't even know what exhibit it is, it's the one he passed out.
A4? He handed out today, A4?
A4.
This is A4?
Okay, go ahead, we got it on the record.
Okay, A4, I'm pointing to lot B on the corner of Mitchell and Gates. Would you say every other backyard, rear yard is larger than the two proposed sites?
By, I'm sorry, by backyard, you mean the area between the house and the, just because there's difference between a rear yard by zoning and backyard, which I think is what you're getting at.
What I'm pointing at here, the rear yard, rear yard, and the photo that you have here, all the rear yards, would you say on Gates, in this photo, these three rear yards are larger than the two proposed sites?
So, again, we are compliant with the rear yard setback per zoning. And I think that goes to the fact that we are trying to move the house to the front, which is why we have a front yard setback. But again, I also think there is the uniqueness of this property in the fact that we have that one house that fronts on Mitchell Road, whereas all the other houses that you're referring to have rear yard neighbors that are on Dogarty or Gates, depending on which side you look at it. And therefore, they don't have this, I guess, intermediate property that, again, shrinks the backyard. So I agree that the backyard is smaller, but we are consistent with the ordinance requirements. And we are trying to get as much of backyard as possible by seeking a front yard variance, which is, again, some relief we're seeking from this board.
Okay. Again, if you're viewing from Mitchell, I feel this, if you're viewing from Mitchell, the rear yard, there is not a lot of coverage. You stated that you, you claim these, these two houses will fit in, but from the eyesight on Mitchell.
I'm, I'm looking for a question here.
And there will be, there will be a public comment, you're gonna get a chance to say all this under oath, so. We'll hear it again.
So lot A, which is the left lot, is 17,967 square feet. And lot B is 15,742 square feet. 20,000, again, yes, and if you look at A3, which is the board at a distance there, you could see the 20,000-square-foot line, which is, oh. No, no, on the left-hand side, there's a 20,000-square-foot, yes, so. So you could see that there's only three houses, three lots on Gates, in this stretch of Gates that are above 20,000. And you could see where our two lots are in red compared to the rest of the properties on Gates.
They're already existing lots.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Sekler, the, we have rolled out curb line on the Mitchell, I'm sorry, on the Gates Avenue side all along, I see you have the driveways. My question is to you, where the driveway, I guess you would call it the apron, what is the plan there actually, I was confused, would it be a gutter or swell or whatever, the whole length of Gates? Or just where the driveway is?
So where the driveway is, we would have a depressed curb. So essentially, you no longer have the asphalt curb because the cars aren't gonna jump over the, you know, 4 inches. But usually have a little lip to help separate the water that's running down the road versus the water on your property. The area where there was talk about a swale is actually on lot B, the one closest to Mitchell Road, from the east side of the driveway around towards Mitchell Road is where the swale would be.
Have you had a chance to be on Gates Avenue during a rainstorm?
I went after a rainstorm, but I was never out there during a rain event.
Would you say to say, with the trees being pulled out along the curb line, and with, there is a large amount of rain coming, I don't know if they reserve years, I see actually all of the curb. When the trees are uprooted, would you say that the curbing would not be as strong once those trees are pulled out next to the curb?
I don't know if I can answer the strength of the curbing. And I don't know if the trees and the curb strength are one in the same. Obviously, if there's curb that is damaged as part of this project, we'd be required to replace it. There's obviously bonds and things that are posted in order to ensure that damage is repaired as part of this project.
Would it be correct to say, a curb on the south side, I'm sorry, a tree on the south side of the curb on Gates, as it's growing in size, as it gets larger, would it be safe to say that that would actually support the curbing?
I, I don't, I would have to know how the root system is growing and which direction. Are, are you questioning if the tree comes down, that it would force the curb to be?
No.
Okay.
If, if a very large tree is basically up against the curbing, on the south side, the tree is holding the curbing, would you say that strength of the curb would weaken?
It could support the strength of the curb, if you're asking if it's, if it's holding up the curb, yes, then, yes. Yes.
I noticed, and I seen the trees that are marked, is it safe to say more than several trees are gonna be taken out alongside that curbing?
I guess the definition of several would have to be discussed, but yes, there are, there are, there are trees that are being removed in the area between the roadway line and the curb.
Okay, is it safe to say, we're trying to improve the, all the, all the water runoff and the drainage, would it be safe to say that if we put in concrete or Belgium block curbing, it would be stronger than this roll pavement?
Concrete is typically stronger than asphalt. But I, I can't speak to, I don't know what the township requirements are for one design versus the other. But I, yes, concrete is typically stronger than asphalt, just in terms of compression. I don't know in a curbing form, but just the material itself.
Would it be better if there was a Belgium block swale or gutter and Belgium block curbing, after all these trees removed, to prevent, possibly when the house is built, prevent the curbing breaking out, the water coming through the curb line and flooding everything? Would it be safe to say it'd be stronger to have Belgium block curbing, Belgium block swale and gutters going all the way down?
I don't know a specific, I don't have a specific answer, again, because I haven't seen water overtake or there be weakened curb. So I can't, I can't agree with your hypothetical. But obviously, if there is any issue with the curbing, it would be on this applicant and property owner to have- and property owner to have the best curb design as possible, since they're the property that would be taking on this water.
Okay, you just state that concrete curbing would be stronger than what they're-
Well, I said, concrete is stronger than asphalt, I didn't say specifically, just in terms of compression strength, concrete holds up more, but I, in a curb, you know, if you drive over a concrete curb-
I'm getting close.
-is different than driving over an asphalt curb, so again, the strength versus what, I don't know if it needs the strength when it has a water storm. If you're talking about strength with a heavy vehicle driving over it, I think there's a difference between the two. I don't know if a water storm has a force level that would affect the, that would impact the difference between asphalt and concrete.
I'm, I'd, I'd rather not get into a lengthy discussion about hydrology as a theoretical problem, I would rather stick to questions about the testimony in this application.
Well, he did talk about the drainage and swell, and the driveways, talking about the same thing.
Yeah, you're also talking about issues that affect the curb, which is in the township right-of-way, and, and I didn't hear any testimony about that, other than what was on the drawings. So, let's, let's try to focus on the application in front of us.
One more quick question, I want something else, would that be fair?
Thank you.
Mr. Sicker, would it be safe to say to upgrade the curb line along Gates to Mitchell, would be while you're doing the apron on the driveways, it would be much more, it would improve the neighborhood, and it would do something for, you know, Gates Avenue?
I can't suppose what the neighborhood wants in terms of the type of curbing, plus, that would obviously be, need to be maintained by the municipality, I believe, so-
Yes.
-they obviously would need to have a say on what would be installed.
Yeah, that would be the township engineer.
Very good, something to think about.
Next in line?
I can't do it.
Did you say you had, that was your last question?
I have one more question on the topic.
Excuse me?
On the curbing, you were trying to get the office, I just made one other question, I moved on to something else.
Oh. How many more questions do you have? Because there are people waiting.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're about due for a bio break, too.
Sagan?
I think we're about due for a bio break as well.
Uh, hold on a second, Ellen. Can, can you finish within a minute or two?
I, I'm done, I can save my comment.
Thank you. All right, let's take a five-minute break.
Yep. Got to now do a cut field cap.
So I can go, Mr.?
Okay, the meeting is called back to order at nine twenty-nine. And if you'll hold on just a second, Mr. Jones has a question.
Thank you very much. Regarding the driveway, both on Gates, as the stormwater comes down the hill and is on the south side against that roll, when it meets the apron part of the driveway, how are you ensuring or what is the design there to ensure that the water continues down Gates and not makes a right-hand turn into the driveway?
Yeah, so typically, you wouldn't have it be completely flat. You'd have a little bit of a lip. Again, obviously, heavy rainstorms, it may overtake it, but the idea is you have enough slope along Gates that it's moving quick enough that it doesn't basically...
It's not going to be flat. There's going to be some kind of...
There's a little lip, yeah, usually.
Like an inch lip?
Inch lip is usually what you use.
It may rise a little bit?
Yeah.
Inch or inch and a half.
Inch to inch and a half, okay.
Anything over that, you feel it far and it's not comfortable.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
...twenty-eight Gates Avenue. Um, have you been granted permission for the second sewer hookup?
They're setting your... I heard you, but they might not know.
The microphone, the batteries are dead.
Yeah, probably.
Technical difficulties. There should be a blinking light on your left-hand side towards the base. They just don't make batteries like they used to.
Those things suck.
No, they don't.
I talk too long.
That's agreeable.
Yeah, for the meantime, I'll repeat your question. Your question was, is there a sanitary sewer allowance for the second lot? I did speak with American Water, which they were direct... The representatives at Long Hill told me to talk to American Water because I believe they purchased the sanitary sewer system. They told me that the... Obviously, this location had one hookup. They did not have any hookup for the missing lot. They didn't have an existing account for it, so they said that it's something that they would have to evaluate out in the field because it was a single-family zoned lot that was unused. The person I spoke to, which is a guy named Walter, and he gave me his ID number, he said that... Sorry, Wayne, and he gave me his ID number. He said that he believes there is ability for us to get service for that second lot because it's in a lot that already exists. We're not creating a new lot. There were two lots here.
But you're not sure.
Correct. And we would not be able to build the second lot, obviously, without... Or we wouldn't be able to occupy the second lot without sanitary sewer hookup.
Because you've ruled out that septic will be used.
Correct. We will not do septic.
So, question for you. I had asked this question before for this property and was told that you did have the ability to change... If you didn't get the approval for the second sewer hookup, to change your mind and use septic. Is that true?
You stipulated as a condition of approval, no septic, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's a condition of approval. They can't get it.
That is, okay. Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have one other... I have another question for you. On the soil boring test pits, you submitted a letter from JZN dated 9/30, and it went over the condition of the soil, which I, of course, didn't understand, but you didn't question it, so I figured that the soil was okay. My question is that you had testified that you had done soil borings prior to that. Were there two instances of soil borings?
So, we authorized JZN to perform the test. I believe that they actually did the test subsequent to that. So, again, the only test that we had done was through JZN. These are the... This was the soil.
But you testified on August 29th that the borings had already been performed, and in the letter, it said that the test that they did was authorized September 13th.
Yeah, I... Yeah, we had asked them for proposal, and you could read the beginning, on July 5th. I had indicated to them to go and do it. They hadn't done it at that point, and I guess they're waiting for some other authorization.
So, there was not another report that we just didn't see?
Correct.
Okay. Another quick question, probably, for the township engineer. In your report, you indicated in a couple places that any future approval should be conditioned upon obtaining. For instance, the letter of interpretation for the fresh lands, and there was one for the riparian zone. Does that mean that without these letters, that the board will not grant approval?
So, they become conditions of approval?
Again, conditions.
Yes. See, the applicant has stipulated that they would meet all the conditions in my letter as well as Liz's letter, and they would become conditions. So, what happens is, should the board view this favorably, they would revise the plans for all the conditions that go through tonight. They would then come to my office and to Liz to review for what we call resolution compliance. So, we go through them, review them again, check each box that each condition has been met. If they haven't, we go back and forth until they're...
Okay.
They have been met, then they will proceed with filing the subdivision, and then after that point, then they can submit for construction permits.
And that's the case with all applications. So, all applications have other agency approvals beyond the municipality, and virtually never are all of them completed prior to the municipal approval.
Okay.
It would be illogical, right?
So, back to the sewer hookup. So, the sewer hookup, getting the second sewer hookup is also a condition of approval. Is that correct?
It's not a condition for the initial... For one dwelling, it would be under this... If there's an approval and all the conditions that are stipulated to or accepted, it would relate to the second dwelling.
Yep.
So, which is the first dwelling and which is the second dwelling?
That hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
Don't turn that one off.
That has not yet been determined by the applicant.
Because... So, we've heard a lot of testimony. This is all about water abatement and making sure that the neighborhood doesn't get flooded out. If there are two houses, and there is a trench going behind both houses, but you don't build both houses at the same time, and you are... So, you're doing the uphill house, and you're putting it in, you're putting the swell behind it, but then it goes to this undeveloped lot because you don't have a second sewer hookup. How will that affect the water mitigation? How will that work?
So, one, the swell would be constructed in full regardless if one house comes before the next.
Okay.
So, the swell gets built regardless, and obviously, when you do these type of projects, we would have to file soil movement permits and soil erosion control permits and things like that that would take into account the case of one is being built and the other one is not, so that... To ensure that.
And that is assuming that the owner retains ownership of both lots.
Yes, it would be a condition of approval regardless, so we wouldn't be able to...
The approvals and the conditions run with the land regardless of who owns it.
Correct. So, if the subdivision is granted, and both lots are sold off individually, how can you say that the swell will be built all the way down when it's owned by two different people?
Again, I imagine that that could be a condition of approval, and therefore, it would be required to be done, or else we wouldn't be meeting... Wouldn't be able to get a building permit or a CO for the property.
Correct. You know, whichever lot is filed for first would be responsible for completing the common... We'll call them the common improvements, which would be the swell and some of the grading that's inter... In between the two proposed lots that would be required in order to stabilize one lot, you know, such that the other isn't, you know... Like, you don't have to put like a temporary retaining wall or something up. You would have to do cross-grading and things like that.
Yeah, I guess theoretically, you could sell one lot before you sold the other one and sell it to two different people, but whoever the two owners were would still be subject to the conditions that we have here today with regards to the swell. And traditionally speaking, what would happen is all those hard, you know, improvements would be made on the property before anybody takes a, you know, takes a concrete truck and forces a foundation.
And just for clarity, they can't piecemeal it. So, if the people buy Lot A, the swell that goes across Lot A and Lot B, that would have to be there for both regardless. You can't say, "Well, I only sold off Lot A."
So, as I said, theoretically, on a bar exam, it's possible that, you know, you could sell Lot A and then sell Lot B to different owners, but the reality is it's not what's going to happen, nor would it be feasible.
And that's the condition of the discussion, that whichever lot is developed first...
Absolutely want that. I want that swell in there. I want those improvements in there.
That's without a question.
Did that answer your question? Did that answer her question?
Must have. She ran away.
I didn't want you to leave.
Thank you for asking one of the better questions of the evening.
Philip Spatz, 121 Long Hill Road. Way back in meeting one, we talked about the water coming off the driveways, and I was concerned it going down onto my property, which is the house with the pond, because it comes down off the road now. And you said that maybe a trench drain would be the answer on the driveways, and I am here to request a trench drain in the driveways because once it does rain, it's a pretty good hill, and it comes right down into my property, even with the swell and the storm sewer system that they put in.
If the board and the board's professionals agree, we could put a trench drain at our property line. Obviously, likely wouldn't be in the right-of-way and connect it to one of the swells along our frontage.
And which lot is that?
B.
Lot B, on the corner of Mitchell Road.
Both of them, I would assume.
The driveways are on Gates.
Well, the driveway for Lot A is just toward the house, is it not? Very slightly, but for Lot A, it's pitched toward the house, isn't it? You have 267-75 at the road.
Of both houses, the water's going to go head towards my property.
You know, again, Mr. Chairman, just on this point, I just... Again, I caution everyone from engineering this thing at the board at 10 o'clock at night. Everyone has an idea. Everyone has a... You know, it's a death by a thousand cuts with everyone giving a little bit and a little bit and a little bit, and all of a sudden, we do one thing, and that may affect now. All of a sudden, I'm going to say that, well, wait a second. If we put a trench drain, then where's that water going to go? And is that water going to go into, you know... Is now that going to be put into the swell, or is that going to be put into the sump pit? As I said, I think this applicant will stipulate that we will work with the towns engineer and prepare a plan with consultation and satisfaction of your towns engineer that will achieve the results of what the board, I think, is intending to hear, intending to accomplish, keeping in mind the residents' statements and requests, but to engineer this thing here at the board meeting, I think, is a slippery slope for us to go down.
Well, as you know, the water's a problem. That's why you're putting six dry wells in and all that. So, I assume that you want to stop the water from going on to other people's properties.
Question, please.
The question is, why not put trench drains at the end of the driveways?
Is your concern, counsel, that what you're saying is one thing that's being requested might help one person, but it might hurt five others on the things that they're requesting?
Yeah.
All these conditions of approval, if the board grants the approval, all these requests and all these stormwater management and grading suggestions should all be subject to the review and approval of our township engineer as a comprehensive grading and drainage plan. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, Mr. Warner. We can't do this and that and this without knowing the full scope and breadth of what each of these little suggestions will do to the other suggestions.
But nevertheless, you're stipulating thus far to all of them, including the trench drain, so long as in a comprehensive fashion, it's subject to review and approval of our engineer?
That is correct.
Well, there was no complaints when we brought it up at the first meeting. No one said...
Sir, I think you just stipulated to it. You said yes to the trench drain.
Again, so long as the engineer believes it's appropriate and necessary. And again, it's... So, we understand, it's not the applicant's obligation to make sure that the water on Gates is somehow moved onto our property. That would be something that perhaps the town engineer or the town council would need to address. If that's an issue, you know, the water on Gates is not the problem of G2 development. The water on Gates should be the problem of the township.
Okay, and the second question I have, also from the first meeting, I asked for a fill, import fill, and you said you were going to do it right now at the break. Did you come up with a square yard figure?
So, I... This is an approximation, and again, I did it in cubic feet just because the grading plan is in foot measurements. On Lot A, again, this is me just doing it by hand and calculator, I'm getting about... Not counting the basement, about 12,000 square feet of cubic fill for the... I'd say the building area. There's a cut of about 2,000 to 3,000 square feet for the swell, and I haven't taken into account the basement cut. So, overall, that lot, that's Lot A, is the larger lot. It's going to have the greater cuts on it, the greater fills on it. Overall, it looks like it'll probably be around 8,000 cubic feet. But again, that's off the...
For both lots or...
That was Lot A. Lot B is going to be less than that, just the type of design of the two lots.
Okay.
And that's approximation. I don't want to be held to that specific number.
Charles Aronowitz-Millington. Mr. Sekler, at the beginning of these... This application, I think there were 34 variances requested for approval. Tonight, you alluded to 16. I'd like you to clarify, how many variances are in the current application with two lots? And give me that number, and I'd like you to break that down in a little more detail for everybody listening tonight.
Mr. Chairman, that was testimony that was previously given. It was given by Mr. Sekler, as well as echoed by Ms. Laheny, the planner. There are 16 variances. Each of those were explained in excruciating detail by Mr. Sekler, and I hope we don't have to do that again.
I beg to differ with it, Mr. Attorney. You said 16. You said half are critical areas, then you said lot size and width. That's not delineating the 16 variances. I beg to differ.
And I gave him chocolate.
I'd like an explanation for the 16 variances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were nine of them duplicates because they were nine?
You said half was variances, so it's eight that's critical.
I'm asking him a question, please.
I want answers.
Chuck.
I want answers.
Chuck, please, calm down.
Yeah, but I don't want to be avoided by not answering the questions. As this attorney says, he answered them. He didn't answer them.
I didn't say I answered any question, sir.
You did not.
I said that the engineer and the planner had specifically addressed the 16 variances.
Maybe Mr. Sekler could run through them once again.
Yeah, I'd love to hear them.
And I'd appreciate if you don't yell at me, sir.
Don't yell at me either.
Ah, Chuck!
I'm going to put up with it.
Chuck, you're not going to point fingers or raise your voice in this meeting. Now, please, be respectful.
Please, let's be respectful to me as a resident of this town.
It's a two-way street.
I heard... I heard the attorneys discuss all the variances. We'll be glad to do it again, but don't get excited.
You didn't do it the first time.
Variance number one, minimum lot size for Lot A. Variance number two, minimum lot size for Lot B. We discussed that these two lot size variances are consistent with the rest of the properties along Gates Avenue. Variance number three, lot width for Lot B along Mitchell Road. This is a pre-existing condition. There's no development on this property that would have remedy for lot width along Mitchell Road. Variance four and five, minimum front yards along Gates Avenue for Lot A and B. That's four and five. I discussed the 25-foot setback. It's consistent with the properties along Gates Avenue. That's five variances. Number six, retaining wall height in the front yard of Lot A. This is the retaining wall that runs along the western side of the... From the building corner to the street. This is to help mitigate any additional disturbances to critical area and to maintain existing tree growth. Now, we get to critical areas. Do you want me to name each one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Variance seven, development in critical area of Lot A. Number eight, development in critical area of Lot B. Any development on these properties would be within a critical area, which is those two variances, seven and eight. Variance nine, minimum front yard setback of principal building from critical areas in Lot A. There is a required setback that you need to have from a critical area. Since we're already disturbing the critical area, we also have this front yard setback variance. That's Lot A, is number nine. Lot... Variance 10 is the Lot B. Front yard setback of principal building in critical area. Then, in variance 11, is Lot B also has the same front yard setback of principal building for Lot B from Mitchell Road. So, because that lot has two front yards, it has the same variance for 10 and 11 for critical areas from Gates and Mitchell Roads. It's 11. 12, minimum rear yard setback of principal building from critical areas in Lot A. Number 13, minimum side yard setback of principal building from critical areas in Lot A. 14, minimum side yard setback of principal building of critical areas, Lot A. That includes the eastern setback and the western setback. Variance 15, minimum side yard, western yard setback from principal building in critical areas, Lot B. And 16, minimum side yard, southern yard setback of principal building from critical area, Lot B. So, I apologize. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 variances related to critical yard setback, critical areas, and 16 total.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the corrections from a half to 10. That's very good. Question number two. You've identified dry wells, six dry wells. We've got the runoff from the roofs going to the dry wells. We've got swales. We had a major, major disaster here with Ida. The town was flooded. Without conjecturing, I want to know what the capacity is with your design for stormwater runoff, however you want to describe it. What type of storm? How many inches of rain it'll take? What it will to satisfy the safety of the homes on Mitchell?
Your ordinance requires a four-inch rainstorm, which is about, again, between a five- and 10-year storm. I will state that the seepage pit designed is designed beyond that. The seepage pit would likely be able to take something between a 10- and 25-year storm.
I'm not sure what that means, given the fact, as I said earlier, Ida caused a lot of problems in this town. When you say a 10- to 25-storm, what would you describe Ida as?
Probably a 100-year storm, 500-year storm, depending on...
So, my question is, your design can... Forget what the regulation is in the town. Your design can withstand what?
Between a five- and 10-year storm by ordinance, and this is a better design than the existing condition. This will be a better condition than what exists today.
When you say better condition, I'm not sure what that means.
If Ida happened today, with no development, there'll be more runoff from this property than if Ida happened after the development.
Say that last one again.
If Ida happened today, there would be more runoff from this property than if Ida happens after this development.
Thank you very much, and I don't appreciate the way I was treated tonight when I asked for a delineation of the variances when you said 50%, and that wasn't the case, and I don't like how the attorney and the engineer handled my responses.
Thank you, Mr. Aronowitz.
My name is Bob Coletta. I'm from Berkeley Heights, so it's a little bit beyond 200 feet.
You want to pick up the microphone, please? You're a little weak. Thank you.
The set that Mr. Sekler... First of all, let me thank Mr. Sekler and Mr. Verlisa publicly for meeting with me and my daughter and talking on Zoom meetings and phone calls, and very professional, and they've done a lot to satisfy my daughter's concerns. So, I just want to say that publicly. The set that you have out here, seven drawings, doesn't show the critical sloped area overlapping the new housing. Has the board seen that drawing? The public hasn't because it's not on the seven drawings. So, if they haven't seen it, it would be good to see it, to get an idea of what's going on, one lot versus the other lot. So, I don't know. Did the board see it, first of all?
Is the...
I don't know what you're showing me.
The Critical Area Disturbance Plan, C4, is that what's being referred to?
I don't think that's in that set. I don't think that's in that set.
It was not in the original seven set. When I did my review, I requested that information from the engineer who provided it, and it was provided to the board members and, I believe, posted on the website. It was not... It was a separate attachment from the seven.
So, the board saw it?
Yes.
But the public did not see it.
I thought you said it was on the website.
Yeah, it was on the website.
It's on the website.
It was on the website. It just wasn't... You had to look at a separate sheet from the seven set plan. It was provided.
Okay. Did Mr. Sekler... And I spoke about a cross-section through the swell and the berm. Did you do that drawing yet?
We have not performed that drawing yet.
Okay. And you are... Just so I... I guess clarification. You are going to have riprap prior to the swell and then riprap in the swell to slow water down, and then whatever the engineer deems... Well, if... Again, I...
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Sekler and I will discuss in detail, but depending on the velocities that you anticipate through the swell will determine what type of material is appropriate.
Right.
It can be a grass-lined swell. If it should be a stone-lined swell, you know, it's not going to be a concrete-lined swell.
No, 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 no. I wouldn't... No, but just...
Just putting that out there.
Because then it would slow the water down. It would perk into the ground a little, you know, as opposed to gushing out onto Mitchell.
And that has to be designed in accordance with the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Manual, which Mr. Sekler will have to meet those standards, both for my office and to get his Soil Erosion and Sediment Control permit.
Okay. Yeah, what happens beyond the property, that's between the town and the applicant, then. That's it. I just wanted to make sure that...
Thank you.
That the board saw that drawing.
Thank you for your questions. If that's it, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
My name's William Zerlow. I live at 8 Darney Avenue, Gillette. I've been there for about 35 years, and I thank Mr. Sekler for what he's doing for the water. There's one thing the town ought to realize is, it floods on the bottom of the hill and it floods by my house, and you're going to be putting more water on the street.
Are you going to ask a question, please?
Yeah, what are you going to do about all this extra water from these swales and all? It can't handle it now, what's there.
So, the water today is getting into that same system. It's just traveling overland, either from our adjoining property or into Mitchell Road, just not via swell. So, it's still...
It's more water flow.
Right. It's going... The water is going to that same destination today. We're just detouring it from going over the property next to us and putting it directly into the swell versus it going over the property in the rear of us and then eventually working into the swell.
Put my...
Yeah, and we do have the seepage pits, which should hold back some of the water that currently would just overflow.
Well, as long as the town's fully aware of it, because somebody's going to get hit with a big lawsuit once when he gets an accident over there. with a big lawsuit once when he gets an accident over there.
You wish to ask further questions?
Yeah, one further question.
That's subject to the chair.
Um, the filter.
Yeah, yeah, if you keep it brief.
Okay. Uh, it comes out to 1,444 square yards, approximately.
I'm sorry, what, is this a question for Mr. Sekler?
Yes.
And your name again is?
Philip Spatz.
This is the Phil, right?
121 Long Hill Road.
This is the Phil.
It comes out to 1,444.
Are you talking about the Phil?
I'm sorry, yes.
You were asked, okay.
Okay, he gave me the figures finally.
And your, and your calculation is?
Is, uh, at, if it's 21 yards per tandem or triaxal load, that's 68 loads of dirt you're bringing in there.
And your answer, your question is, is that correct, Mr. Sekler?
Is that correct? Don't you think that's excessive?
My, my judgment's not excessive or not. That's not for me to say.
Okay. What is for you to say?
We're not going to deal with the question of excessive, and the calculation was an estimate only at my request.
I got it.
Okay?
But I've been asking since the first meeting for an estimate on a filter, and on the third meeting, he just found, figured it out during break. So that's not really right. You, you asked him also, and nobody could give an answer. Now he gives an answer and it's, well, maybe it's an estimate. This is 62 triaxal loads of dirt. That's a lot.
Your, your question is, is that correct? That calculation?
Is that correct?
Yeah, I would have to do the math to convert the cubic feet to the yards.
We don't, we don't dispute your math, but he's not going to answer the question as to what is minimal nor excessive. That's not within his expertise.
Thanks for nothing.
What's the right, give me a better answer. Is that true, 62 yards? It seems like a lot. So what's roughly the right answer? Give me a rough answer. It seems like a lot to me as well. It can't be right. What do you think?
I'm getting 340 cubic yards.
Yeah, that's what, 296, I got 300.
Again, depending, and again, this doesn't account any extra cut of the basement. So again, you could be reutilizing this cut and fill, so you try to balance it a little bit. So again, without the basement, I had 340 cubic yards.
So it's 15 or 16 trucks? That's 15 or 16 trucks?
If it's 21 cubic yards per truck.
It's a 20.
Yeah, 15 to 20.
Yeah. So it's 15 to 20 trucks?
Per, and that's lot A, again. But again, I, I also didn't optimize.
That's a smaller lot, is lot B.
Lot B is.
It's going to be a smaller number.
Lot B is smaller and I think it will have less fill.
Worst case scenario, it's like maybe 30 trucks?
Right. And again, there's possibly some balancing that could be done with the excavation, the basement.
Correct, we're just starting to take out what, for, for the foundation.
Yes.
Would you, would you come, would you come up to the microphone, please, so we can all hear you?
You said 8,000 cubic feet for the first lot?
Yeah.
And a little less for the second lot, which I put down 5,000.
Why don't you cut it in half and say 4,000?
8,000 cubic feet is, is about, is a little less than 300 cubic yards.
296.
It's 296 cubic yards. You divide by 27.
Yeah.
And then you divide that by.
21.
21 per truck, and then you add 14 for the big lot.
For the big lot, and less on the small lot. So even if you doubled it at most.
So about 20 trucks.
So you're like 21 trucks.
20 trucks, yeah.
21 trucks.
And again, Mr. Sekler didn't account for some of the cut material, the basement.
So it's even going to be less?
Yeah. It, you know, when the calculation is done in an AutoCAD software, it accounts for the cuts and fills on the property, we'll output a, a whole number, but it appears that under worst case scenario, you're looking at 25.
Are there any other questions about the testimony that you've heard tonight? Is anyone out there in the audience prepared to testify under oath as an expert on any matter, uh, relevant to this application? In that case, we ready for comments?
Public comment.
All right, public comments, and I'm going to ask you not to be terribly redundant, and I've got a three minute timer here, and I'm going to hold you to it.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that you not count the name and address and swearing in, in the three minutes.
Okay.
Please, please give us your name and address.
Jessica, lot on 40 Mitchell Road.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, please proceed.
Um, I am asking that if I need a hair over three minutes, you could possibly give it to me. I have spent countless hours on a project that I have no financial.
Start your comments.
Um, so my main concern is that, one of my main concerns is that if the, uh, Mr. Veleza sells this property with the plans, that we have a lot of loose ends that I feel are not tied up. So I would just like some of these things to be conditions of approval. Um, I just have a quick question for, I don't know if it's the engineer or the board, lot consolidation plat and the lot grading plan have not been submitted. Do we know when they will get submitted and do we have any opportunity to review?
We, we have the grading plan.
Okay.
The consolidation plat has to do with the meets and bounds descriptions of the individual lots. That is something that is finalized as a resolution compliance item.
Okay. Um, so I, one, my next one was that we were requesting lot B be built on first for the sake of the swell and the berm, but you're saying that that would be a condition of approval, that that runs straight through. Um, so that answers that concern. Um, uh, and I guess then that also answers the question that, I know there's the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, um, that is put into place, but because that only looks at sediment runoff, it's not looking at the water. So again, we're looking for the water protection during the construction phase, and I think that also goes into the one condition, that only 1,000 square feet of critical slope can be disturbed at one time. Who ensures that this is happening?
It's, it's, it's part of their initial staging plan, and you know, that's, that's to the point where it's feasible. Of course, you know, when you're working on the foundation of the house, if there's more than 1,000 square feet, there's only so much you can do.
Right.
The Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, I mean, does take care of sediment, but sediment travels largely through water. So they are also looking through water. So, and that is an outside agent, agency permit that has to be obtained. So if during construction, the minute they start work out there and there's an issue and you see dirty water running off the site, anything like that, you as a resident, as a neighbor, can call the Soil Conservation District aside from the town, and they can go issue, they can go inspect the site, and if there is a violation, they can issue a violation, they can issue a stop work order. So they also have a level of authority over the project once.
Okay. Um, and then I also have a question about, or I guess a statement. So when one house is being built and then the other lot is empty, um, there's going to be, there's going to need to be some sort of grading between the empty lot and the current lot. Are we leaving that up to a guy in a backhoe, or is there going to be some sort of written plan or design on what the grading is going to look like?
I think that was answered already. If that's, if this is a question, I think it was answered already. Do you have a comment?
Well, I'm not sure if it was a question. I, I don't know if it was answered, the construction of like, say, lot B, and then there's lot A that's sitting there. We don't have a grading plan between the two lots. So is the guy in the backhoe just deciding how he's grading between these two lots during the construction?
The stipulation was that any cross lot grading would be undertaken.
Done simultaneously?
During the first lot construction.
Okay.
Similar to the common lot improvements, that would be considered a common lot improvement.
Um, and then is there any way to put in the condition of approval, and this could just be a no answer, that, um, if the property owner decides to sell, that he has to sell both at one time and he can't sell one at a time?
Board can't do that, it's illegal.
Okay. All right, I was just asking. Um, okay, I think that's all, thank you.
I think she's still got 10 seconds.
I printed things out if everyone wants my printouts, but I think that we are.
Very well said, thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Paul White, 25 Darney Avenue, Gillette.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, um, before the approvals, uh, or however it's going to go tonight, um, from what I kind of looked up on my own, uh, the approval must benefit the community, uh, and represent a better zoning alternative for the property, um, not just by granting the two homes, uh, there could be other options, you know, like we said, supposed to better the community and the neighborhood, um, which, you know, one house would be an option. Um, again, granting, uh, one as opposed to two homes, you know, it'd be less, there'd be more raw land. Mr. Sekler claimed that you could build a house just the same size, but there'd be less driveways, less patios, there'd be more raw, raw land to soak up the, uh, the water runoff. Um, also my question, I guess, to the board, um, uh, lot B, um, is required to have 20,000 square foot. They're trying to get a variance for the 15,742. Um, maybe the board can answer this. What's the average that size, I guess we have to say percentage, so this would be about roughly 15% less than, uh, maybe closer to 20, 15 or 17% less size from the 20,000 on lot B. What's the average that has been passed, uh, previous to this?
Board, board can't answer that, plus it's irrelevant. Uh, every case is different under the law.
I understand, yeah.
And the lot area variance that's being asked for, for the two lots, it's for the board to decide whether the applicant met the positive, negative criteria on the C2 or the C1 grounds. C1 being undue hardship, that the lots as they exist are already undersized, albeit in different, much different proportions.
Okay, thank you. Also, um, we have a steep slope area in lot, uh, A, which is, I know they have critical points in lot B too, but A is the main problem, lot A, um, which are defined as critical areas. Um, and there's also seven variances that do not seem logical for this property. It's critical area, shouldn't be built on, uh, that's why it's deemed critical. Um, again, the board must evaluate whether the subdivision would present a better zoning alternative, uh, at this location than what exists, uh, and in that critical area, again, it's deemed critical, not to be built on, um, and it's just logical not to put anything in that area. That's it. I thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
And that's in Millington, right?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, and is there a number?
605, 41 years.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
I would like to advise the planning board members that most of you were appointed with this applicant as a member of the township committee and a member of the planning board. Therefore, well, first of all, he has now supposedly resigned from this board, but he never got sworn in, in January, because he missed the meeting. He missed the meeting in February. So I'd like you to make your decision on this application, independent of his appointment to you, and be objective without regard to his appointment to you, to this board. Point number two. I've served on this planning board for three and a half years. Two years as vice chairman. During that time, I've never heard of an application with 16 variances that were finally delineated in detail tonight. During my experience of those three and a half years, most of the applications were for two or three variances. You heard tonight delineated 16 variances. I think you've got to be well aware that this number of 16 grossly exceeds most applications that come before this planning board. And I need you to take that into serious consideration when you vote on this application. Thank you for your time, and I want to thank everybody again for delineating the 16 variances that weren't delineated until I asked the question.
My name is Robert Coletta, 137 Chaucer Drive, Berkeley Heights.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
One thing that, uh, that I've come to see with this application is the critical sloped area. It's called by the town, critical. If it's that critical, you really have to evaluate pretty darn hard why you should get a variance for something that's critical. If it's critical, don't name it critical if it's not so critical. If you're going to grant a variance, don't call it critical anymore. Change the wording or whatever. But if you have something that's critical, I would have to say that you need to really evaluate what you're going to grant, if you're going to grant 10 variances on that critical sloped area. That would be the one thing I'd say. Uh, the other thing, I'm an architect. I cannot submit drawings to a town with a steel beam missing, a footing missing, something undone. I would ask you to kind of reevaluate how many undone items you have here that you're going to approve at a later date. I could never, ever get a permit, ever, if I left anything off my drawings, anything. I didn't get a permit because I left a date off, a date. How do you do it with all these critical, you know, critical ideas and, and items? So I would just, again, ask you to just evaluate how, if you do approve this, that, to put some thought into these two items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Uh, my, my major concern is, uh, this neighborhood, this area is wet. Great swamp, wetlands, Passaic River. No one's ever mentioned those elephants in the room, okay? And that pond across the street on Mitchell Road, that's never run dry. I mean, I'm, I'm here over 25 years. It's fed by natural spring, underground. And we're in Morris County, you know we're sitting on a humongous granite formation. Anybody that says no, we've got a lot of quarries that operated in the area, in Route 78, you just look at all that blasting that they had to do. There's just so much dirt, and it's really not dirt, it's clay, and clay does not absorb, okay? It gets slick and muddy. My concern is water going over onto Mitchell Road, and in the wintertime it freezes and creates a hazard, okay? It's already with no development, it's already, uh, water is going onto 40 Mitchell, okay? That's my one concern. If they get approval for undersized lots, and, and new construction, by the way, you have to put in dry wells, okay? I took code enforcement at CCM, and I also used to be a New Jersey State Licensed Home Inspector. Put my license on inactive though, so I kind of know what I'm talking about. The overdevelopment, undersized lots, we had a structure fire, these folks here will tell you, a couple of years back. It took Sterling a half an hour to get accrue. Berkeley was the first ones to respond, and then Shattam responded. But you can't count on that. And with overdevelopment, okay? Wetness, and that intersection there at Gates and Mitchell, we've got three different school buses that go in there. we've got three different school buses that go in there, okay? So now you're going to add two driveways onto Gates Avenue? These are some of the concerns that I have, but rest assured, we are wet. We're wet in the area. We're surrounded by water, okay? That's about it. Please, and I'm glad you picked up on the water there. Okay, so I know you're all awake and, okay, you're aware, okay? Thank you. That's it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public have a comment at this time? In that case, I'm going to close the comments and ask counsel if he has any summary statement to make.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Do we need to make a motion to extend for 10 or 15 minutes? We're...
Is it 10:30?
Yeah, I'd like to finish this up tonight, so I'd like to extend as long as it takes.
I'd like to put a stop bar on that.
We could do another one if you deem it necessary. You want to go to 11 o'clock?
All right, 10:45. Own favor.
Mr. Chairman, I will certainly keep it brief. This has been an application that has morphed over time. It has been an amazing collaborative process, both with the board, with the town professionals, and with the public. Didn't necessarily hear that, but there certainly was collaboration between the principals of G2 Development, Mr. Sekler, and the neighbors in the area. I remind the board, doesn't take reminding, but this was two lots. It will remain two lots. We know it was three at the beginning. We realized that was a little bit of an overreach. At this point, we're just simply asking for a lot line to be moved and for two reasonable homes to be built in the neighborhood. They fit. I don't think we even needed Mr. Sekler's testimony to appreciate and understand that two houses that have the same front yard setbacks, the same relative size, that are the fourth and the sixth or seventh largest lots in the neighborhood, that this certainly is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. We will continue to work with the town engineer to listen and to appreciate all of the comments that have been made with regards to the drainage and the water. We will work to secure a plan that this board, the engineer, can not only be proud of, but one that actually works. I think you guys appreciate the fact that whatever we do here, while the public may not understand or appreciate it, whatever we do here with regards to development, the drainage is going to improve, the neighborhood in terms of the water will improve. We're taking a portion of the already, the runoff that's already on the lot, securing it on the lot as opposed to allowing that to just free flow onto the neighbors' properties. And with that, I thank the board for your time, for your patience. This has been quite a long process, three noticed meetings and lots of late nights, and I'm not going to belabor further, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. The board is going to take a few minutes now and discuss.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission to assist the board, I was going to run through the conditions with the help of...
Please.
If, so the board is considering whether or not to grant the variance relief, and I believe we've all can concede, we've all heard itemized now at least once, the 10 variances at issue. So the, I won't belabor that any further. The, but what I will do is go through the conditions of approval in the event the board grants approval, what's been stipulated to by the applicant as I have, and please correct me if I'm wrong, where I'm wrong. All reports by our planner, Ms. Laney, including the January 28, 2023, the comments therein, as well as Ms. Anello, our engineer, including her January 30, 2023 report. I had the following, and let me know, counsel, if you did not stipulate to these, but I have replace all street trees along Gates Avenue. From our earlier meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Warner, I don't, I don't recall that one, to be perfectly honest with you.
Liz, jump in.
If it's in the right of way...
It's in the right of way. You have to replace them.
Okay, then, I mean, whatever's obligated by law, certainly...
A letter of interpretation and/or an absence or presence determination from DEP with respect to the wetlands and the flood hazard areas.
Correct.
Again, correct me if I'm wrong, I had granite block curbing along Gates Avenue.
No, we discussed curbing, but not...
I know it's discussed, but I hear...
Yeah, I mean, there's none in there, but I don't even know if that would look appropriate.
Groundwater recharging and mounding analysis has already been performed to the satisfaction of the engineer?
Yes.
That's done?
Yep.
Landscape plan subject to review and approval of our engineer and planner. Comply with township standards for minor development. Locate stormwater features on lots A and B, subject to the review and approval of our engineer. The cut fill analysis will be provided, correct?
Correct.
The, there's no need for pool compliant fencing anymore, even though it was stipulated to because there's no pools. Soil testing and size of seepage pits has already been determined?
Yes.
And if there's any changes, as with respect to all drainage, is subject to review and approval of the engineer. Mound up replacement trees to seven feet tall at installation, I have. No septic, I have. Standard dry wells with inspection pits at grade and backflow preventers?
Inspection ports.
Ports?
Ports, accurate.
Oh, okay. Ports, not pits, my fault. And provide an as-built survey with the plans for the building permit. Install rip wrap in the swale. Tree species for proper screening, subject to review and approval of our planner. There were our provides and others.
Mr. Warner, just with regards to the rip wrap in the swell, I think it was going to be a TBD on that one, whether it was, we said at the beginning and at the end, and then the engineer was going to advise us, I think CJ wasn't going to be a concrete slide, we're going to do something.
Right. And again, all the drainage is subject to review and approval of our engineer in a comprehensive fashion, but those were some of the individual items, but thank you for that clarification.
Swell front.
Yeah, front and in.
Right, two swells.
And the easement for maintenance of the retaining wall at the property line, subject to review and approval of the board attorney and/or the township attorney. Planting bed to, in the stepped up retaining wall, subject to review and approval of the engineer. Directing retaining wall to seepage pit per review and approval of our engineer.
I think that was one that we didn't stipulate to...
Oh, you didn't.
Because there was testimony that that would cause sediment and fill in the...
That's right. It would increase the sediment.
We're going to look at other...
Other possible options, because there, you can wrap that pipe that can put a filament, and then you also mentioned there was another device that could also be used, so we're worried about that one wall being so low and that's catching water.
We don't necessarily, we don't object to the concept, it's just I don't want to have specifically what is the solution.
In concept, I had here, but increases sediment, other options, so thank, so yes.
As long as it's not honed in on...
Subject to review and approval of the engineer.
I don't want to see a...
Extend swale further to the west on lot A and possibly also the pits, subject to review and approval of the engineer.
And provided there was no impact on healthy trees that would affect the neighbors' view of the lot.
Right. And pipe sizing analysis where the swell meets the pipe under the driveway, I believe it's on the lot to the rear, fronting on Mitchell Road, subject to review and approval of our engineer. Correct the typo on the limits of disturbance plan. File demolition permit for existing home prior to perfection of subdivision. Reroute trees impacting the swell, or if necessary, they would come down if the roots interfere with the swell, subject to the review and approval of our, I had planner, is that planner, engineer? Engineer. The drainage, drainage plan still subject to review and approval of engineer. Common improvements must be completed with the first lot to be developed, whether it be A or B. Trench drain or property, bear with me, trench drain along property line to connect to the swell along lot B and around Mitchell Road, subject to review and approval of the engineer. That's that trench in the front that wraps around Mitchell. That was stipulated to earlier this evening.
Is that the drainage ditch? Is that what we're talking about there, Mitchell, Gates onto Mitchell?
No, I think, I think what Mr. Warner is talking about is the gentleman's concept that we should put some kind of trench drain at the head of the driveways.
Right.
And we had discussed that there would be some curbing there, you know, and again, I don't want to commit the applicant to a trench drain because there is all kinds of implications that that could have that are not before this board or even thought about. I just want to leave that to the engineer, and the engineer to figure out what works.
The design as is, doesn't direct water toward Gates anyway, so. His concern was that additional water was going to come from the driveway into Gates, and the driveway isn't great.
It's going the other way.
Yeah. One is great, it's created the other way, and the other is great toward the swell, so it's kind of a non-issue.
Okay, we got the rip wrap prior to and in the swell, subject to review and approval of the engineer. Cross lot grading done during first construction. First lot to be developed slash construction. That's all I had. If there's anything else...
I had one question. Does the board want the fence on the retaining wall, or does the board not want the fence on the retaining wall?
No fence. I don't, yeah, no, I'm fine. It's fine to know.
There's talk about putting some kind of landscaping on the backside of that anyway, so.
No fence.
So no fence, therefore...
Liberties to the landowner, right? If something happens, so that's a question as well.
It is, well, in the event, that's what ends up, if there's an approval and that ends up being the board's desire with respect to not accepting the stipulation to provide the fencing, then I take it it would be a six-foot retaining wall at that point.
They still need the variance for a six-foot high...
Still need it, it's over four.
10 feet, 14 foot.
I learned that in law school, six is greater than a four.
Yeah.
Okay, those are all the conditions I have, but there may be more.
So is that an additional variance?
No, that was noticed in one of the 16.
Thank you.
Instead of for 10 feet, it's...
Would an applicant need a variance if the homeowner wanted to then come back and erect a six-foot fence?
Yes, well, the applicant went, well, whoever came back and said, "I want to put four feet on top of the six feet," would need the variance, in my legal opinion.
Yep.
If there's no other conditions, then I believe the board would be deliberating and voting on either granting the relief with all those stipulated to conditions or not.
Who'd like to start?
I don't mind. I mean, firstly, just, do you think that's a lot of conditions? As a matter of interest. Just to follow in the theme.
I, you know what, the number of variances, the number of conditions are, the actual number is not what's relevant. What's relevant is what the board determines as to whether or not the applicant met the burden of proof and what the conditions are appropriate to mitigate any detriments associated with the deviations. How's that for an answer?
That's fine.
That was lawyer, that was lawyer I was suggesting.
Well stated. So, and a lot of this is obviously centers on water, and you've said that you're going to commit to working with the engineer to make sure that whatever the best possible solution is, that's what you're going to achieve. That's what you're going to go for. And you're committed to, this is better than what exists today, right? Because I know people down the road there that has water coming off of those properties and that area down, down street, down Mitchell. So if you're committing to, this is going to be an improvement, the swales are maintained, right? They're going to be connected. Water's going to dissipate where, hopefully can dissipate as well, as best it can. I'm a lot more, a lot more comfortable about, in terms of the general concept of what you presented versus what you presented before. And the size of the houses, you took that on board. For me, the front yard, the variance, that's, that's fine, that sort of keeps in keeping with the rest of the properties. So, I'm starting to feel more comfortable about the situation. However, I still am concerned about the steep slope area on lot A, on lot A, and any consequences there. I'm not sure how you can comfort my thought there, other than you believe that you're going to do the best you can for the engineers to mitigate any negative impact of building on that particular lot, right? Well, not a lot of... When I hear other comments.
Well, I agree with most of what Mr. Hands was saying, and I also commend the applicant for working with the neighbors, hopefully to resolve a lot of the questions and problems that were going to be before, before this board. Some of you do know, and some of you may not know, I live in a neighborhood, I walk past or drive past there every day. I think three houses, three lots would have been too much. I think one big house on one lot would have not fit into the neighborhood at all. I like the idea of having two relatively sized lots that fit into the neighborhood with the setbacks. I think it'll be an improvement over the building that's there now, the structures that are there now. I am pretty confident that all the conditions can be met and will be met before any shovels are put into the ground, and I, I think it's, will be an improvement to the neighborhood.
Mr. Jones?
I appreciate the fact that you listened to the board. I know the board did reach out to the residents to hear their concerns, to ensure that we are focused, almost laser-focused, on those concerns to make the situation better, not just status quo. That was one of my takeaways that I'm taking from this. Did not like three houses, didn't like it at all. I think two is much more conforming in the neighborhood. I think Mother Nature's still going to throw her curveball at us, so we're going to have to contend with that in some way, shape, or form. But I feel that we're in a, in a better place. I do have the same concerns about the critical slope, but I think time will tell on that with the mitigations that are put in place. If we follow through on that, I think there's going to be some homeowners that are going to have to keep up with that, and homeowners, residents in the area, to make sure that they're not going in and destroying the preventive measures that have been put in place. So, so I just want to say thank you. I just, from across the board and the feedback that I've gotten, whether it was positive or negative, I appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, two minutes ago, I had some really great concerns about how the, how this project was developing. This latest proposed change really satisfied my concerns. I couldn't see three homes, I couldn't see pools and decks and patios and everything when lot coverage is at issue in this town. The lot sizes and setbacks, you know, while they require variances, they're consistent with the neighborhood, and therefore they're not a detriment to the zone plan, in my opinion, which is the key to deciding whether or not to grant a variance. Significantly, the project proposal doesn't require bulk variances, and that's very, very unusual. Here we've got conforming with respect to height, lot coverage, building coverage, and FAR. So we're talking about technical variances as opposed to overbuilding the neighborhood, which I don't think is the case here. I'm also very confident that we have two highly competent engineers who've been working together to address the flooding issues, stormwater issues, and I think they're going to do a great job. So, that's my take.
Yeah, I'm impressed with everyone here, both the applicant and the neighbors. I find that even though it can seem a little tense at times, you know, when you take a step back, the neighbors are coming with valid concerns, and equally, the applicant has been meeting many of those concerns. So I'm very just impressed with the effort that I think everyone in this room has put into it, and for being patient with each other. And so I'm also quite happy with what was presented this evening. Not to be redundant, but three was too many. I think ones would be really odd. This, and one thing I think you did tonight that I really appreciated, you put a lot of things like in perspective for us. So, yeah, so I'm happy with what was presented tonight, and thank you very much for your thoroughness.
Great. Thank you. I believe the applicant has met the test, and very simply, I think this is a model for collaboration going forward. I was impressed with the collaboration that took place between neighbors and the willingness of the applicant to work through that process, and I think that should be encouraged and develop more in the town as we go forward. This is a challenging site, no doubt, and we have some real challenges with water-related issues. I would like to see, you know, the township committee study this area a little bit more with regards to storm drainage. bit more with regards to storm drainage aside from the application to allay some of the concerns that have been expressed tonight in that area. I've seen where they've done some work on the east side of, of Mitchell. I'm not sure that it's addressed all the concerns as you go down the west side of Mitchell, and that needs to be looked at. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
From my point of view, there must have been a reason why, when Homestead Park was developed, this lot was left in its original prehistoric state, or at least pre-colonial state. And obviously, the reason is the slopes all seem to concentrate at one point where these two lots exist. On the other hand, it does complete the neighborhood. And the arguments in favor of the lot sizes, as shown on that chart up there on the easel, are compelling. Even though numerically, we're talking about sixteen variances, the neighborhood houses are all on smaller lots and they didn't have variances because at the time that they were built, we didn't have a zoning ordinance. So, as I said, I'm willing to concede that this completes the neighborhood and sixteen variances is the price that has to be paid in order to do that. I'm hoping that we don't find many more situations like that in town, but as the town runs out of room and as we attempt to utilize every square inch of what we've got in town, we may see more of these. And I think we have to be considerate of the amount of effort that has gone into preparing this application and bringing it to this point. Counselor, do we want to hear from you again?
If yes.
Do you want to give us a resolution?
Well.
One second. Do we need to make a motion again? Because we're coming up on the quarter two. No.
Yeah, I think we're close enough. Eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, that's fine. Just get it done.
Yes.
You don't have to hear much more from me, right?
We can't, we can't have a resolution until we have a motion.
Yeah, there won't be, no, there won't be a resolution. And, and as I said, by virtue of the deliberations, it appears as if there's going to be a motion, a second, and a majority vote for granting the relief with all the stipulated two conditions, but that's to be determined by the board themselves, and someone has to make a motion, a second, and there has to be a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Till?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sandau?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Really, really do appreciate the collaboration.
Well done. Thank you, everybody else.
Thank you so much.
In spite of the fact that we've got another seventeen minutes, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest that the other items on the agenda be carried to the next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, unless anybody has a serious need to bring any of them up.
No, you're good.
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.